We are calling the meeting to order on April 10th, 2018 at 6:05 PM. That's all right.
I was gonna say we shouldn't do the pledge of allegiance. Cliff should lead it in honor of his birthday today.
Happy Birthday to you! Happy Birthday to you! Happy Birthday dear Cliff! Happy Birthday to you!
All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off Cliff, you have to tell us which one.
I know.
Which birthday? X-ness?
Thirty-two. Okay, I apologize for being late. Could not be avoided. Thank you for starting. I'm glad we could catch your birthday by birthday. So that was a nice happy note. On a sad note, we've had a great, great loss in the district. And so I don't want to be business and say that our hearts and prayers go out to the loss of a teacher at Casa Gondi, Thomas Griffin, who was Teacher of the Year and loved by many, many folks and students. And it was a surprise and it was quite devastating. So our hearts and prayers go out to him and his family and all that loved him. So, okay. Moving forward, thank you for your patience. Could you do me a favor and just pass these down to Dave Rose so I don't forget? Thank you. Okay. All right, item five, adoption and approval of tonight's agenda 5.1. Still moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, problems? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six, approval of minutes. 6.1, approval of the minutes of March 13th, 2018.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6.2, approval of the minutes of April 2nd, 2018.
Still moved.
Ah, jeez.
Second.
Any questions, problems? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Here's some more fun stuff. Item seven, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. Did I see, did we have? Oh, Students of Semester, that's why. That's what I mean, it's usually Students of the Month. Okay, so 7.1, Students of the Semester. We have Mary Collins and PAX. Let's start with Mary Collins. Come on, so you should be presenting. Someone should be, are we doing reports or we're doing Student of the Month type thing, right? Yeah, so we have somebody coming up to present them? All right, come on down, we'll walk you through this. Come on up to the podium, let us know who you are. Are you the student? Okay. I'm gonna call you up individually so you get all the applause just for yourself. Let us know who you are and you can tell us which person you would like to do first.
I'm Nina Fersing and I go to school with them at Cherry Valley. And I've known them both since I moved here and they're great. And yeah, I'm very proud of them.
All right, who would you like to call up first? We'll do them one at a time.
I'd say Shay first.
Okay, Shay Doherty, come on up. I love you turning this way so your parents can find this on community access later and replay it over and over again. So smile big. Everybody say wonderful things about you now.
So Shay Doherty is an eighth grader that has attended Mary Collins School since kindergarten. Shay's teachers have planned to say about what a deserving student she is to be celebrated. Shay is one of the kind of students that Mr. Dell has had the good fortune to work with. He should know because he was Shay's fourth and fifth grade teacher and then also taught her in seventh and eighth grade. Her teachers really appreciate her creativity, thoughtful work, and extremely positive attitude. You can always count on Shay to help her classmates, says Mr. Dell. She is a natural and quite a leader in the classroom. She offers support to her classmates. Her classmate, Dorina, has this to say about Shay. She is a really hard worker and has really great grades. She also has so much energy and positivity. She has a great attitude about everything, even homework. Shay's second and third grade teacher, Ms. Howe, says that she's a kind, thoughtful, and comprehensive person. She has beautiful penmanship and has showed great empathy for her peers and faced challenges. Shay's sixth grade teacher, Ms. Toll, says that Shay is a brilliant student who has faced, wait, what? Oh, she's a brilliant student who is kind and gentle-hearted. She's creative, fun, and a hard worker. Shay's accelerated, Shay's accelerated math teacher, Ms. Boa, says that she has really applied her intelligence to her work. She thinks there are math problems and gets excited about a challenge. She's organized and is very respected by her peers. Shay is not only a great student, but she's also a very strong athlete, showing the same effort in both soccer and softball. Shay's softball coach, Chris, has this to say about Shay. This is my first time coaching Shay in softball and it has been a pleasure. I've heard many positive attributes she would bring to my team from previous coaches. And she is not lovely second guessing about the choice of director. She is tough, fearless, and fast. Most important to me is her respect from her teammates, coaches, and the game of softball. I'm fortunate to have her on our team. Shay will attend Carrida High School next year and looks forward to continuing her education in science. She plans on continuing her participation in team sports and has the rule that the possibility of becoming a professional softball player. Shay is a wonderful example of a hardworking, thoughtful, and kind student from Mary Collins School. We are proud to celebrate her here tonight.
Is anyone here with you tonight? Any family, close friends?
My mom.
And where is your mom?
Back.
Thank you very much for all your support. Ellie Oatman, is that our next?
So Ellie has also attended Mary Collins School from kindergarten through eighth grade. Over her nine years, Ellie has developed quite a reputation for being a student leader in every way. She takes her classes and schoolwork very seriously, sharing her learning in graceful and exquisite ways. She is a strong collaborator who draws out the best in those around her. Ellie is always there to offer help wherever it is needed, volunteering to do the jobs that others shy away from. She has played a crucial role in playing the school assemblies and designing our yearbook. Ellie leads by example. She can do seemingly anything, but rather than making it look easy, she shows how rewarding it can be to work through a challenge and to create something successful. Plus, she's really fun to be around. Somehow, in addition to all of this, Ellie has two passions that are central to who she is. She is an accomplished softball player with eight years of league experience. She is currently on both a rec team at Devon and a travel team still briefs. Anyone who knows Ellie knows how she strives to be a softball player, to be record with. She finds ways to connect everything she does and wears to softball. If you ever find yourself on the field with her, you better hope she's on the team. Ellie is also passionate about animals, especially pets like cats and dogs. She enjoys watching animal law enforcement shows in her downtime and likes to live her own pet. But most importantly, she plans to aspire as a veterinarian so that she can share her love, talents, and skills by enriching the health of the lives of the pets and the human companions. Ellie will be attending Pet Luma High School next year and looks forward to joining the junior varsity softball team and hopefully working her way up to varsity. She is also excited about the opportunities to choose classes that will help her advance towards her goal to becoming a veterinarian. Ellie's presence at our school will leave behind many deep impressions. Ms. Richmond fondly remembers Ellie beaming into the room, lighting up the whole class with her smile, making everyone feel important. Ms. Lewis recalls how Ellie's sweet confidence always brought out the best in her classmates. Ms. Toll thinks of Ellie as an enthusiastic, creative student who works hard and cares about learning while retaining a great sense of humor. Mr. Yu always remembers the transformation that Ellie made during her last two years at the school as a quiet, motivated student to one of the loudest, strongest voices at our school. And finally, Ms. Hurchford raves that since the moment she arrived at the school, Ellie has been a gift to all who have known her. Not only is she brilliant, but kind and friendly a match.
A true gem.
Ellie Oatman truly represents the best of what we hope to see in the Students of Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley.
Yeah, my mom, my dad, and my little sister.
All right, how about PAX? Let us know who you are and tell me which, who do you like to call up on your day?
Hi, my name is Jasmine Peralta and I'm going to be presenting Peter Calley.
All right, Peter, come on up.
Peter is a fun and enthusiastic student to be around. Peter is always smiling and you can easily hear laughter in the room whenever he is present. His classmates really enjoy his sense of humor, kindness, and love of learning. He cares deeply about his work and puts forth effort into all that he does. Peter is also not afraid to make mistakes and is willing to ask questions when he needs help. Peter never gives up on a task even if he's the last person to finish it. His determination and perseverance show in the high quality of his work. Peter maintains a 3.86 GPA in our accelerated program and we are very thankful to have Peter as a student at PAX at McKinley.
My dad and my sister.
Next, I have Risa Pinkley-Greer. Risa is a very responsible and independent student. She is extremely organized and puts incredible effort into all that she does. She can be counted on to complete a task when it is assigned and does a very, does a very well-timed job of managing her time on longer projects. Risa has a passion for all subjects that shines through with her 4.0 GPA. Risa is also a very talented actor and singer and has performed in several shows on our campus. Risa is an extremely kind, caring, and positive role model for other students and we are very proud to have her as a student at PAX.
Always so much fun. I often say, sometimes I feel like a little bit of an underachiever after hearing everything that you all are achieving and doing and it's just absolutely amazing. Okay, I would have stayed standing. Yeah, I was gonna go first though, one last. Okay, so anyway, I was gonna say, we're really, really proud of you. The reason why we ask your family, close friends, and whoever's with you when you come to get your reward is because we know that it takes a huge community of support to help you in all that you do. These days with all the community service work you guys do and athletics and extracurricular and math clubs and music and all the things that you do, it's very impressive. But we know it takes a lot of support from your families and we're very fortunate to have a community where so many of your families do support our students. So I appreciate you all for that as well. I'll take a reset in a second, let's finish up with our school reports and we're gonna start with Penrose.
Give me the baby. Where is the baby?
Did she step outside?
She promised me that baby.
I won't, I won't speak out that baby. So not kidding about that baby.
She promised me on her breath, didn't she? Wait, wait, wait. Ashley, I wanted to see. They would be seeing my full screen. You know what I'm saying? So which one I want to make this for you? Wow, that just seems like a good video. Okay, all of you all should probably spread out here like this. Yes, you'll have to, here, the sand behind me, no one's behind me, how do you mean?
Gee, thanks for having us tonight. Our garden, nutrition, and environmental education program is relatively new. I'm Mary Ann Burrell, a teacher on leave of absence, and we are creating this program. Only one year ago, we got the major impact grant from PEF. So with community support and parent volunteers, we built this building which has a greenhouse and a kitchen in it.
We like the garden program because if we're working outside instead of inside, you get to learn about ecosystems, about plants, about new foods. It, and it also still has math to it, but it's like, it's a fun way to learn.
We try to incorporate science and engineering standards into everything, even what the kindergartners do. Here kindergarten were identifying perfect matches. So they were given one plant part and they had to go find one that looked exactly like it. First graders classify insects by legless, six legs, eight legs. They order, all students plant food and taste food. We also get a chance to help the custodian. This was a student was gonna say this, who's not here, do you wanna say it?
We do something that we call campus cleanup. It's, we would rake all the leaves as far as we can reach, so it's helping the custodian and making a cleaner school.
All these leaves used to go into the landfill and now they go back into the garden compost.
We knew what how much water to give to plants and we went on a field trip to Bunky Farm and we made a dirt ball with seeds in it to plant. And on Monday, we made a cycle of when you can plant different things.
The third graders help us in Mammoth County Association by planting a nursery for their baby plants. We water them, we feed them, and we care for them. We are doing this because we study pollination in our classroom.
We plant all of the pollinators throughout the campus.
The fourth grade classes' jobs are to work with all the rotten stuff. All the leaves that get turned into compost and given to the worms along with the old leftover cafeteria salad. We are also growing peas, potatoes, and carrots, which we will use as food in our upcoming field trip to Fort Ross.
We, the third grade, also, we, we have many gardening areas throughout the school. And sometimes growing gardens, we would go and pull weeds to help the.
Nick, how, we're listening to you.
So the sixth grade, they prepare the food and they also study about nutrition. Basically, how we prepare the food is we cut all the carrots and beets and different types of vegetables and the butter. And we can grate it and then we make it into a different type of meal. My favorite meal that we made was called the rainbow wrap. It was a rice roll and in the middle of all of it was different vegetables. And they were all different types of color, not just green. So it'll all look like a rainbow.
Okay, we are reconvening from closed session. We will be returning to closed session at the end of the board meeting. Before we move on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it has already been a busy night. I apologize for being late and that we're a little discombobulated. So I'm a little off kilter for here for a second. I've been a little remiss, I should have said earlier before closed session too. Seems like it's been an eternity, but we have not met since the shooting at Red Horns High School. So it's really important that while they're very far away from us, that we extend our sympathies and our thoughts and our prayers to that terrible tragedy. So, should have said that earlier as well, so I beg forgiveness for that. We are now at item number five, adoption and approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, 5.1, February 37th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six, approval of minutes, 6.1, approval of the minutes of February 13th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Special recognitions, reports, and presentations, 7.1, Students of the Month for February 2018. All right, let's start with Kennelworth Junior High, their first moment. Who would you like to call up first? Call Catherine Croft? Okay, so here's your beautiful ward and we're gonna take you right over here and you get a look at the camera and you get a smile big, we say all kinds of great things about you. And if there's family in the room, you're welcome to get up and take pictures if you'd like as well.
We are pleased to present the February student of the month, Catherine Carlson. Kate is described by all of her teachers as a hard worker and an excellent student. She works well both individually and in groups and offers to help her fellow students when needed. She is not afraid to ask for help if this is a high priority of her work. Her P.E. teacher, Mr. Russell, states Kate performs at the highest level on a daily basis and she does so with a positive attitude. She never seems to have a bad day. She's truly exceptional. Outside of school, Kate enjoys playing sports. She plays soccer, enjoys bossing with her mom, mother, and grandparents, and likes to play sports with her older brother. Kate's an adventurous girl who likes to explore. She wants to do three-week road trips with her mom and one summer, her and her family camp every weekend. When she grows up, when she grows up, she'd like to be a journalist or an environmental lawyer. She has chosen these two possible professions because she likes to have fun and gaming. Kate loves to take part in community service, has participated in forage the past four years, and volunteers at the animal shelter. Kate also finds time to work as a referee for PYSL and CFC Soccer and plays the tennis. Kate's mom notes her excitement for life. She loves adventure and is passionate about traveling the world. She has a large map of the world in her bedroom with pins marking the places she's been and wants to go. Her mom describes her as, sorry, her as perspective and thoughtful with a strong moral character. Very social and compassionate toward her friends. She is passionate for the exciting things life offers and strives to make them a reality. Mr. Raya, for his grade teacher states, having Kate in the classroom makes it a better place for all the kids. Simply put, Kate is great. Congratulations, Kate.
Do you have any family in the room with you tonight? Maybe this guy, maybe someone up here. We'd love for you to stand up so we can applaud you as well.
Our second Student of the Month is Tanner Colton. Tanner's teachers describe him as a team player, helpful to others when he puts his best foot forward on a consistent basis and does everything that is asked of him. Bright and hardworking and a pleasure to have in class. His photography teacher, Ms. Vandermeer, relates that Tanner is genuinely interested in learning and understanding why and how things work. He's curious, thoughtful, and insightful with a wicked sense of humor. Outside of school, Tanner enjoys riding his BMX bike, going to skate park, and playing golf with his grandfather. He also plays soccer, baseball, and basketball and enjoys camping. His family is so impressed that he is able to maintain such good grades with so many outside activities. Tanner's long-term academic goal is to attend college at Stanford. His mom states that he, again, sorry, again. His mom states that she also sees all of his hard work and says that it's because he takes so much pride in his grades and what teachers think of him. Tanner is also described as a wonderful big brother to his eleven-year-old sibling. She goes on to say, he is helpful around the house and always does whatever is asked of him. He has always been the kid that will look after his younger kids and help them with whatever they need. Kate enjoys helping others and learning new things. He is always respectful and will be the first one to say hello to an adult he knows. The best compliment you can get as a parent is when someone tells your kid, tells you your kid is respectful and all-around good kid. The staff here at Kennelworth agrees and is so proud to call this student one of ours. Congratulations, Tanner.
It's really important that we honor all of you for supporting your students. That's why we want to give you a round of applause as well. So don't be bashful, stand right up and take it. Okay, how about Pet Luma Junior High?
Pet Luma Junior High School is pleased to present Stella Francis as one of our February 2018 Students of the Month. Stella was born in the city of San Francisco on January 13th, 2004. As a junior high school student, Stella is an excellent student, a competitive athlete, an enthusiastic, friendly, and organized young woman. Her goal is to continue to do well in school, eventually attend a UC school, move to a larger city, and become a successful interior designer or event planner. But she's open and excited about whatever the future holds. Her teachers have lots to say about Stella, including consistent, polite, respectful, and always willing to help. Just a great kid, works hard, helps everyone, gets along with everyone, and contributes to the classroom. And very positive, personable, hardworking, and curious. She gets excited about learning and she always has a smile on her face. Our girl is also a mover and shaker around the campus. Stella has been a valued member of our volleyball team for both years at PJHS and multiple-year member of student leadership in elementary school. She is currently in irreplaceable offices. She is socially adept and makes friends easily. Stella is a firm believer in standing up for what she believes is right, taking risks, and having a good time in the process. Her parents add, although Stella had to start at three different elementary schools due to the move, due to moves, she showed herself to be resilient and strong through these and other challenges. She has an infectious enthusiasm for knowing the world and people in it. She's unique, caring, intelligent, and kind. We are so proud of her. Stella Francis is a model student and we are pleased to have, and we are pleased to have her represent Pet Luma Junior High School for the Student of the Month award. Stella Francis is a model student, and we are pleased to have, and we are pleased to have her represent Kennelworth Junior High School for the Student of the Month Award. Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to present Will Donovan as one of our February 2018 students of the month. Will was born on August 12, 2004, in Santa Rosa. He's an excellent student, talented athlete, and outdoorsman, and a responsible and capable grandchild. He has a terrific sense of humor and a caring, compassionate man. Will's goal is to focus in and sharpen one of his many hobbies to the point where he can be highly competitive, and we know he can do it. His math and history teachers say Will is an awesome kid. Light, helpful, hardworking, it is such a treat to have a mature and respectful young man in the classroom. And: Will is the kind of student you can partner with anyone, and know they will not only get along, but succeed. He's positive, friendly, well-like, and thoughtful. As an outdoorsman, Will's passions include hunting, fishing, dirt biking, and mountain bike riding. He's a dedicated forage member and shows market hog at the local fairs. Will has been a critical team player on the Phantom Boys Basketball Team for both years at PJHS. He was also nominated as a school representative to attend an event in Washington, D.C., while in sixth grade at Pangrove Elementary School. His parents add, "We are so proud of Will. He has faced huge challenges in his life that few kids his age will ever have to deal with, and has met them with strength, courage, and responsibility. He's able to live an amazing life and do all the things he loves, continues to learn new things, shares his knowledge with kids before age. Will loves to create and learn things. We have no doubt that this will carry him in, this, we have no doubt that this will carry him into his future career, whatever that may mean. We are lucky to have him, we are lucky to have such an amazing son." We agree. Will Donovan is a wonderful representative for Kennelworth Junior High, and we are proud of him and forward as a, for a student of the month award.
How about Casa Grande?
Our first student of the month from bus riding would be Grace Petralia. Grace is a hard-working and dedicated student athlete. Her favorite part of school is taking Spanish. Last year, she took the AP for Spanish test and passed, wearing a certificate in violinry. Now she tries to keep up her Spanish with the Spanish club that she and her friend founded last year. Grace participates cross-country in distance track. Those sports have introduced her to people who are now some of her closest friends, and they have taught her the importance of being mentally and as well physically strong. Outside of, outside of school and running, Grace enjoys reading, painting, painting and watercolor, and being outside. The summer before sophomore year, she spent two weeks in Australia exploring the outback, learning from abroad, you know, people sailing through doors and swimming in the Great Barrier Reef. And since then, she has been passionate about the environment and protecting it. Currently, Grace volunteers at Bounty Farms, a sustainable and organic farm in Kennelworth for her senior project. She plans to major in environmental studies in college. Her dream is to travel as much as she can, since she believes there is so much to learn by being out in the world and experiencing it. Congratulations.
Our second student of the month of the award from Casa is Jacob Anderson. In his free time, Jacob can be found writing, drawing, reading, or listening to one of his, to one of his many playlists. Jacob enjoys running and has participated in Casa's track and field program the past three years, earning the outstanding Sprinter Award two years in a row. He is a writer, editor, and artist for the school paper, and is looking forward to helping, to helping the journalism team maintain a position as one of the highest-reaching school newspapers in the country at the National High School Journalism Convention and Book. By first grade, Jacob was writing and illustrating his own series of short stories. Since then, he has expanded his writing horizons, including novels, poetry, and movie scripts, much of which remain a finished document on his laptop. A self-proclaimed movie, Movie Buck, he spends much of his time at the local cinemas and dreaming of a day a movie he wrote will be played on a big screen. As an avid and active member of Sonoma County's LGBT plus community, Jacob is currently in the process of creating a short documentary-style film centered around coming out, coming out experiences from members of the community, both at Casa Grande and around Sonoma County. Jacob is planning on attending a four-year university in Southern California in the fall and majoring in English. He wants to be a professional screenwriter, author, or journalist. Jacob hopes to travel the world and someday spend time in developing countries, helping to build schools, construct wells, or improving the learning quality for others in other, in any other way possible. More than anything, he wants to make a difference, no matter how small, leaving the world a better place and changing lives along the way. Thank you.
Last one up, please. Kennelworth High School.
So our first student of the month was from January, who was unable to come for last meeting, so it's Laura Sanval. Laura Sanval-Rivas is a very involved student at Kennelworth High School. She finished the fall semester with a 4.2 GPA and has taken several AP and honors classes, but the most impactful one would have to be a course with Ms. Lunibus. Ms. Lunibus has been Laura's only history teacher at Kennelworth High School, and has taught Laura not only the importance of history, but also about tolerance and open mindfulness. They also share a love for the musical Hamilton. Mr. Tocot's biology and marine science classes have also been very inspirational for her. Laura is a very active member in the drama club and TV broadcasting class at Kennelworth High School. She is the president of the drama club and is directing a short play, also known as a one-act. In TV broadcasting, she is the head of the business department and works with management, such as scheduling, and occasionally stars in a commercial or two about all good driving school. She is also involved in Skills USA, where she uses what she learns in broadcasting class to compete with a team in regional and state competitions. Last year, Laura's team won gold regionally and silver in state. Laura has a passion for performing. She has been participating in plays and musicals at Kennelworth High School since she was a freshman, and is also in the chamber choir. One of Laura's favorite experiences throughout high school was being on the girls varsity tennis team as well. Outside of Kennelworth High School, Laura is in the high school cabaret at the American Conservatory Theater in San Francisco, where she sings acts and dances. When Laura graduates from high school, she will attend a four-year university with hopes of pursuing a career in musical theater and business. Laura is very honored and thankful that she has been recognized as the January Student of the Month. The teachers and mentors at Kennelworth High School have never failed to motivate and help her. She would also like to thank her parents for not only their support, but also their guidance and family values. Congratulations, Laura.
And our first February student of the month is Cody Evans. Cody Evans is our first student of the month and has been, um, his high school experience has been enhanced by having Jonathan Knox as his teacher for all four years. Through his filmmaking class with friends Connor Polypne and Jay Jones, Cody has worked on wide range of emotionally poignant and technically impressive films that push boundaries of conventional filmmaking. He has also been involved in many of the plays throughout his four years at Kennelworth High School. And other than cinema, Cody has been heavily involved in the PHS Drama Club and is currently the vice president. This last semester, Cody achieved a 4.1 GPA. Cody applied to UCLA, UCSB, UCSC, Burstley, and SF State for a major in cinema, and in the future, he hopes to attend UCLA or SF State in the fall. Congratulations, Cody.
Our last one is Annika Schmitz.
She's at Skills USA.
Oh, my goodness. We'll do her next time, so she can answer, Lori?
Okay, thank you.
Boy, you know, I work for someone that hasn't, or with someone that hasn't been in high school in very, very, very long time. And he made mention recently that he was so impressed having a child that's thirty-four years old. He was so impressed when he was seeing all of these kids recently on the news and how well they were speaking, from Carnclet and elsewhere. And that in his older view, he pictured all of the kids of this era looking at their cellphones and being self-absorbed. And I said, "Oh, all you gotta do is come down any board meeting and see not only the students that are receiving the awards, but the students that are presenting, because they do a phenomenal job, and I hope we don't have any tragedies, but any of them could speak on TV just as well at the best of them." We're very proud of you. You're just absolutely amazing students, and amazing families that support them, and we couldn't be more proud to have you in our district. And you'll get to look forward to having your name on the wall, and as you can see, they don't go anywhere, they're always here. So many, many, many moons from now, you can drag your own kids back and say, "Here's your goal, we want your name up here too." Drag them back, bragging rights. Let's see, let me take a look, um. Do you want a break now? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take a break since it's so late, just to allow students the opportunity to go home. I don't know, some of them sound like they study a lot, without feeling like you're disrupting the boarding system. We'll take a three-minute recess, okay? Okay. This is only for Dr. Lynch's sake. Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Thank you for the break to let everyone get needed to file out, file out. That takes us to 7.2, the presentation, Adult Education High School Diploma Graduation Requirements.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for taking some time to put us on your agenda. I'm Pearl Waxman, principal of Kennelworth Adult School, and Nancy Manuelli, our assistant principal, and Amy Jasa is our project manager for Adult Secondary Education, which is growing in the Sonoma County Consortium, Adult Education Consortium. So, um, if you could help, next piece.
We'd be happy to do that. So we're here this evening to talk with you about the graduation requirements for the adult school diploma. That's the first program area that you'll see at the top of the slide. So it's adult secondary, which includes high school diploma, high school equivalency, which includes GED and HSET, and independent study program. The other programs you'll see listed below also represent the rest of the programs that we offer. We'd love to talk in great detail about those tonight, but there's no time. That's not our mission.
Alright, so we wanted to look briefly at what the requirements are. So there is a state minimum requirement of a hundred and thirty credits to receive a high school diploma. That's the state minimum. Currently, Kennelworth Adult School's graduation requirement is two hundred credits. And often, we found, and we'll show you my research coming up, that, you know, it's about a hundred and eighty credits typically to receive a high school diploma and adult education program, and we'll take a closer look at that. So here's a survey that I did. I sampled some schools that are either near to us or are large enough in scope that we would be interested to see their statistics. I want to mention, all of these are WASC accredited or in process of being WASC accredited, so that's important. You can see Piedmont and LA Unified, you know, they're under the hundred and eighty. The majority of the, of the programs are at a hundred and eighty. I put a little notation for Nevada Adult Education, because they're currently working with their board to reduce theirs to a hundred and eighty as well. So that's on the table for them. And then there's a few over a hundred and eighty, but you can see the majority were right in the hundred and eighty scope. So, why do we want to do this? We are interested in changing our graduation requirements, because often we find our students have so much going on in their life and so many barriers students get to class. So we're trying to think of what are, what are some ways we can be more attainable and that they can achieve success faster. So one of that would be looking at reducing our elective credit requirement.
And adult schools are typically not equipped to offer a wide variety of relevant and interesting electives. We lack the facilities, we lack the staff, so that's another reason why we'd like to lower the number of electives required.
So our goal would be to assist students in overcoming those barriers that already, you know, help keep them from class. Looking at helping them create a realistic timeframe, but we also recognize the need for more career exploration. So we are offering and wanting to add a career exploration class as part of a mandatory elective, if you will, so that we can better support them, not only just get the diploma, but also transition to either college and career, you know, whatever that next step is, we'll have some more, more assistance with that.
And this slide, this slide sort of shows you a side-by-side of what we currently require for an adult school, high school diploma, together with what we're proposing. Everything in light on both slides is exactly the same, so again, the only area that we're looking to make a change is in terms of the elective credits required and the required career exploration piece.
You know, sometimes we get students that join us that have more than two hundred credits, or have two hundred and ten credits, but were missing something when they were in high school before, and thus they didn't get that homeschool diploma. And then they come to us, and it's like, "Okay, you've met our minimum of two hundred, and then we haven't had a residency kind of requirement sort of course, and the Career Ready 101 will really help us with that, too."
So what is the Career Ready 101? So the program that we adopted, APT, is the creator of the program. And we're currently working on with it with some of our students right now. It works with anybody that doesn't know what they want to do, to somebody that has a really good idea of what they want to do. Because it helps kind of either solidify their beliefs or, you know, increase that. Always told they have this umbrella over them. They need to figure out what's underneath that umbrella. Like, a lot of people want to do business, but what do those jobs entail? So this really helps explore that based on their own interests. We use Onet Database as a part of Career Ready to really see what salary job expectations, expectations are. We want to make sure they're looking at, you know, a growing industry, not a declining industry, so it's all real tangible data, and they can create a resume that's professional quality. So so far, this has been going really well with the students.
And we just wanted to give you a little snapshot of who our typical student is in terms of age, stages of life. And our average student, the last few years when we pulled the numbers, it's like twenty-four point three years of age. Our oldest grad back in the day was eighty-six years old, so we kind of have a that person is not calculated in these numbers, but it's anywhere from eighteen to kind of forty-something in the last number of years for the grads. And now, as we talk about next steps, we would love to be able to collaborate with the district administration on updating the board policy, which is sixty-two hundred adult school graduation requirements. This was last looked at in 2005. And we'd like to gather input from the cabinet in terms of this process, and then when it is deemed ready to make an official proposal to the board for a vote and implementation for current and new students. Then if you were some Marv Arsteller, January grads, thirteen of the twenty-six that completed in the first semester of the school year. And we want to thank Ashley for the amazing photography and the equipment. Isn't it like superb quality? And the students have been calling and asking for, like, they want the total digital, because these are keepers.
They are.
Which is amazing. So people are wondering if you might have some questions of us.
So, just to add, obviously, we're in support of this.
So just to add, obviously, we're in support of this for, for a number of reasons. Most programs are at 180 credits. And focus is those core class work, classes there. But I think more importantly, the, they're adding a component that's, to us, the most important one of all, is that it's not just about checking off the box. We have an obligation to really have a conversation with them about where are you going? You know, what direction? And so, you know, the career readiness thing is, is the important, to me, the important piece in this to add as requirement. The only thing I would say in relation to it is when we, as we, if we go through this way, is that the Career Ready 101 is the curriculum. We don't want to name the course after the curriculum, because that's a product. So we call it career readiness, whatever, we just wouldn't call it Career Ready 101.
Yeah. But... CDE, we've got some labels for courses that we're required to use, so we'd have to be a little more generic like that.
Carol, do you know the historical reason or, can you even just revise the historical reason for the 200 credits? Was there a solid reason back then? I mean, I can't mind if it was just somebody spun aboard, but was that tied somehow to the, to the main high school?
My guess was that it was a little bit more a norm for more, most adult schools. And because I know NAPA used to be 200, and several on the, on the list used to be 200.
I can actually take, I can answer that question. So this is a state, what, what happened was that traditionally, when, when programs were set up, they by default went with the same number that most continuation schools were at. So, because most continuation schools were at 200 at that particular time, then when adult programs first started, they said, "Well, it's, isn't it just like a continuation school for adults?" And added a 200 number to that. Most in the 90s recognized the real differences between that, and they started to make those transitions to a more manageable number that focused in on some of the, some of the limitations with resources that adult programs have, and also what adult kid, you know, students need. Because, you know, I mean, people don't want to say this, I'll say it for you. The last thing you want to do is give, give students busy work. You want to equip them for that next move and not give them busy work. And they're, in some cases, maybe not in our program, but I will speak for other programs, there's a feeling like we're just trying to create electives for students to get their diploma when they really met all the requirements for that. So although we typically don't, I, I don't see this as a reduction of our standards, actually. I think it's adding the component that they really need to have.
What's the average time that it takes a student to graduate adult ed? Is there a range?
Yeah, just total fluctuation.
I guess we could run the numbers, but some people come, they need five credits, some people need 100 credits. Like, one of our last graduates needed 80 when she left Valley Oaks in 2011. But life, she started and stopped and started and stopped and kept working away, and it took her, you know, seven years. So it really varies.
It varies by hope or...
It's very individualized.
Long as you tell a graduate.
Yeah.
Do you see a lot of these students go on to college or the JC?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have an outreach coordinator that we work with through the JC, says we're holding like a workshop to help our students transition to that path. And then through our partnerships with CTE and Cal Regional, a lot of them come back to us and do different CTE opportunities, too.
So what, the minimum requirements for transitioning over to adult ed, would you review those?
The minimum requirements...
Not for graduate.
Okay, not for... You have to be, you have to be 18.
Yeah.
You have to be 18. You could be a parent and be considered to be an adult if you're a parent, or maybe 18, and have an interest in earning a high school diploma. Usually, we say you need to have at least 100 to 150 credits we like students to have. Otherwise, we recommend high school equivalency to take the GED or HSET test, because...
Do you have to be, because you can be 18 now, some kids turn 19 in our comprehensive schools. But you, you can be dis, you have to be disassociated from the high school? Or can you have a foot in each hand?
We have a process.
So we have a pre-transition worksheet where the counselor or administrator can recommend an 18-year-old student who has no chance of graduating to think about adult ed, but it has to go through a series of steps before we would consider that.
Maybe it's part of the process.
That's what I was given, too, before the adult piece. Thanks.
Yeah, so there are lots of conversations that take place before any student, fifth-year senior or other, is able to transition to adult ed. Because obviously, getting that homeschool diploma is the preferred path. And we find that the majority of students value that greatly, but there is a percentage for whom transitioning to adult ed just moves them along on their path.
But I thought, Carol, I thought there was like a window, like after you came out of a comprehensive school, wasn't there a window of opportunity, you could make up a certain amount of credits in adult ed and get the diploma from your homeschool?
And that is still kind of happens with night school and some summer school, where students can make up credits to graduate either with their class on time or in the summer.
And that's still in play, that wouldn't be affected?
So we, no, that's, that's concurrent enrollment for helping people with credit recovery for seniors. Yeah, so we still have that to some degree, yeah. And that's just a little tiny side piece for us now, because that can't be funded by adult ed block grant.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Thank you all.
Great program.
Wonderful program. Been on a wild out, I've watched a lot of amazing people graduate and do an absolutely amazing job. I have enjoyed learning so much about the program from you over the years. Value you a lot. You guys are great teachers. This was a great presentation, and I can see why the three of you, why your program is doing so well. It's, it's great.
And Carol, they ought to have at least one question here, honor. Positivity and optimism.
Well, thank you. Well, I, I guess you're referring to the fact that I'm retiring. Tiring, right? Yeah. But I do not, wanted to keep my fingerprints active so I can come back and touch your hats or something.
Love it.
If they have me.
I would say, we all did a big, we saw it, so...
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, and then take the 7.3, Presentation by the Governing Board's Real Property Advisory Committee. So we have a couple representatives coming up.
Our sneakers coming up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Eric Backman from Casa Grande High School.
Bennett Halli, Principal of Petaluma.
And Sean Malard, Administrator, the teacher of Casa Grande High School.
So I trust that you all have this report? So I'm not going to read it to you. I think in this case, my job would be to verify that what you have in front of you is indeed factual and accurate, and wanted to walk you through the process as, as we experienced it. So we were called together sometime in the new year, I think following your charge to create the 7-11 committee. There are 11 members, as you see. At each meeting, we had three of them. There were at least seven members, so we had a quorum every time, I think that's important for you all to know. The meetings were guided by Chris Thomas, who guided the first meeting, the second two, Chris, Thomas, Lori Horassa, and the attorney.
Phil Hunter.
Yeah. So they were guided by the attorney for the most part. As you know, the committee was charged with the task of determining whether or not this property adjacent to Casa Grande, which is almost 17 acres, could be deemed surplus. We were also charged with the task of making a recommendation to the board as to what to do with the property if indeed we determined it was surplus. So at each of the meetings, we reviewed projected enrollment numbers, demographic studies of the city of Petaluma, and also projected studies of the impact of real estate projects that are going on. I guess there are 1,000 units that will be constructed over the course of the next few years. So we were asked to consider the potential impact of, of those housing units on enrollment. It's important for you to know that at each of the meetings, the, the committee made the determination that we believe the property to be surplus, that even with the potential impact of 1,000 new units, we believe the campus of Casa Grande is big enough to construct facility if needed, should enrollment rise. And all projections into the near future show that it's not going to rise by much, unfortunately. So at the final meeting, it was open for the public. Both Bennett and I published in our newsletters, mine was a newsletter, yours was...
On the website.
On the website, an invitation to any interested party, really in the East Side, to come to the, the board meeting for this, this hearing. A number of Casa students were here as part of an assignment to watch government in action. When invited to give public comment or ask questions, there were none. So low, low, or no turnout from, from the public, other than our students, which is great. At the meeting, we worked with the attorney and wordsmithed the, the final statements. We were all in agreement that the statements were as they needed to be before they were sent to you. And you have them in front of you. So in the end, the committee unanimously supported the decision to recommend to the board that the property is surplus. We went on to make specific recommendations as to what we believe the property should be used for. And here, I'll, I'll just read the statement. So there are two recommendations. The first, that the district considers selling or long-term leasing the Casa Grande property to a developer, with either the developer being obligated to construct a performing arts facility at Casa Grande High School, or the proceeds used to fund or complete the project. The second recommendation, that the district, if needed, considers an exchange of the Casa Grande property for another site within the district boundaries that the district can utilize for school purposes. So we spent a good deal of time wordsmithing that first recommendation, which is the highest priority of, of the committee. And again, that was unanimous. All members present voted for that. So with that, I would open it up for questions, if there are any.
What is the second one, you're talking, the 6.4, 4.2, that you just said?
Yeah. So as I recall, and others can chime in, but, you know, if, if the land was sold and it was deemed necessary to have property in another site within the district that may be growing somewhere, I think there was some focus on the Peng Grove area, possibly, that we wanted you to, we wanted the board to have that as an option.
Great responsibility, but we'll keep the information.
So that if we didn't sell the Casa property, you could exchange it?
That's right.
And that's allowable on the law?
Exchange that 16 acres? For 16 acres in a different part of...
Or a part of it, or a part of it.
Something of equal value.
It does have to be a street. Be some combination.
Could be a combination of exchange plus cash, or, you know, I mean, could be a combination.
Thanks for your hard work.
Yes.
Really, it's hard work. Yeah, really appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate the time.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you. We are now at item eight, comments from the public. I've got three and three. Let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the Climate Action, because I owe them an email, and I feel like I should show them my piece of paperwork circled in red. And I apologize, you were here tonight, I didn't get to you yet. I'm not sure if you were here earlier, so I'm gonna read what's on the card, I'm gonna read it quickly, because I don't think it necessarily is going to apply to these two items next. But I will read it, and then I will call you up. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any item or items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy BP9323, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of 20 minutes on each subject matter. Sorry about that, lost my place. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy BPAR1312.1 specific to complaints against employees. Should comments in the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. So both of the topics for tonight that I see are items that are for public comment, meaning they are not on the agenda. What that means is because the rest of the world didn't have notice that we would be discussing this item, we cannot discuss this item. Sometimes it's frustrating when you come up and you're passionate about something and, and you spill your heart out about whatever it is you're coming to talk about, and we say, "Thank you." And it makes you feel like we're not engaged. It's just because since the rest of the public didn't have notice, we can't have a lengthy discussion. We can ask you a couple clarifying questions, we can take information to follow up with you, and we always appreciate that you're here and sharing your thoughts, your ideas, and your issues. So I'm gonna start with the Climate Action Resolution, and how about Lucy London? Would you mind coming up first? Come on down, we're gonna give you four minutes. I'll give you one other warning, we, we give you, it's a really obnoxious little timer at the end. You don't have to stop mid-sentence, you can kind of wrap up, but I do not like interrupting you. So once you hear the buzzer, people kind of start wrapping up, so I don't have to interrupt you, London.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lucy London. I am 17-years-old, and I'm a resident of Petaluma. I attended Petaluma Junior High, and now I'm a junior at Nevada High School. I'm very grateful to be here, and I'm incredibly thankful for the actions you've already taken to promote sustainability in our community, specifically with the addition of solar panels in many local schools. I'm the president of Earth Club at my school, and I'm here to, and as I've become more aware of my own actions towards protecting the earth, I've begun to see a lot of room for more improvement in the education and policies regarding climate change at my school and in my community. I'm a member of Schools for Climate Action, and I'm here to encourage you to consider adopting and passing a resolution to Climate Action similar to the resolutions passed by the Sonoma County Office of Education, the Sonoma Valley Unified School District, and the Sebastopol Union School District. I'd like to bring up the importance of speaking up for national action on climate change, remembering that we are stewards of the earth and that the earth is our home. Climate change is an issue that continues to grow in importance, and we are already seeing the effects of it close to home. If we do not act soon to stop it, the future of the human race and the future of our planet is greatly endangered. We still have time to stop the changing climate and the scientific innovation necessary to do so, but we are missing the political will and influence that comes with it. By acknowledging that climate change is a generational justice issue, and stating your expectation that all elected leaders should take action, my generation and the generations after me will be more equipped to combat the effects of climate change. I strongly encourage you to fight for, fight for your children by resolving to take action against climate change, for we are the future of this world. Thank you for all your work on behalf of our community and for considering a strong Climate Action Resolution.
If you pass one, would you bring, would it bring you back to our district? I can listen to you talk online. Very good job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Thank you.
I did also forget, honey, we can't clap, we cheer. I'm gonna assume it was for the issue, it was for lovely Lucy. Again, I don't think this is one of those topics, but sometimes we have heated debates, and so we ask for no applause, just so someone doesn't get intimidated to talk. But I think that was for Lucy more than anything else. Okay, Jonah, come on up.
My name is Jonah Gottlieb, and I'm a sophomore in high school. From kindergarten to eighth grade, I attended schools in the Petaluma City School District, and my brothers currently go to Cherry Valley. I currently attend Credo High School in Marner Park, the world's first one-planet school. I am here today on behalf of Schools for Climate Action to encourage you to pass a resolution of Climate Action, similar to the resolutions already passed by the Sonoma County Office of Education, the Sebastopol Union School District, and Sonoma Valley Unified. Unified. Human activity has exacerbated the natural greenhouse effect, causing the average global temperature to rise significantly. The actions we take now are imperative for the future of not only our region, but the entire world. I would like to commend you for installing solar panels throughout the district, as well as transitioning to decomposable trays for lunches. Because of this, I'm optimistic that you are fully prepared to pass the resolution. When we think about natural disasters caused by climate change, our thoughts are automatically drawn to hurricanes like Harvey, Irma, and Maria, or melting ice caps thousands of miles away. But for us, the problems facing our planet hit very close to home. There's an overwhelming amount of scientific data that shows catastrophic events such as the Sonoma and Mendocino County fires are exacerbated by climate change. In the case of the fires, this was due to abnormal dryness and increasingly powerful winds. The United States is home to five percent of the world's population, yet we produce almost a third of the world's greenhouse gas emissions. As a self-declared global leader, it is time to take some action. As citizens of Petaluma, we must take a stand and continue to be a leader in the fight against climate change. The way to do that is to pass a resolution that will make the district's facilities and operations more sustainable, create a curriculum that educates students about climate justice and the causes and effects of climate change, and create a culture of engagement and nonpartisan advocacy with local, state, and federal jurisdictions for science-based climate policies that protect past, present, and current, past, present, and future students within the district. Our goal is for 2,000 school boards across the country to pass similar resolutions by Earth Day 2019. As history shows, nonpartisan grassroots campaigns such as this are very effective in breaking political logjam in Washington DC. We are confident that this level of advocacy will translate into political will for common-sense national climate legislation. The sentiment was only reaffirmed when I spoke to representatives of Congressman Jared Huffman in our nation's capital just a few weeks ago. In conclusion, we implore you to pass a resolution by Earth Day this year in order to put the Petaluma School District at the forefront of the fight for environmental justice. Being in the center of this issue, we have the unique opportunity to go down in history with the other Sonoma County school districts, as the ones who showed leadership in the face of a rapidly deteriorating climate. By supporting a climate resolution, you are choosing to protect the current generation, as well as all subsequent generations. Climate change is not just an environmental issue, it's a social justice issue. Schools for Climate Action would love to work with you to pass a resolution that will reaffirm your commitment to your students and their futures. Thank you.
Well, Harden, I feel like other achievers need to. You did a great job. Thank you. And Jennifer, come on up.
Thanks for having me. Do you want to talk about-
I definitely not.
-the following day?
Well, thanks so much for having public comment and having the opportunity to speak. And then I want to echo the youth that just spoke before me, we worked together to come here, so I'm not going to reiterate what they said, but I just want to mention, they are youth in our community. And I'm a parent of a child in the Petaluma City Schools, of a first grader, and climate change is definitely one of the biggest things I'm worried about in his future. So what I am asking today is your elected leaders, and you are also, your role is to help support the greatest outcome for kids, and so let's not be silent on the greatest threat to them and their futures. And working together to pass a resolution to join the others in Sonoma, and hopefully send a wave across the rest of the country will help build some of the will that we need to pass some common-sense climate resolution, climate legislation to change the wave that we're going right now. So I do want to say thank you so much for the incredible leadership, for the solar panels that are going up and have been going up across the district, sorry to save you money, which has saved our taxpayers and parents' money, and money that's better spent with the education that you can help support here. So thank you so much. Earth Day is April 22nd, and we'd love to celebrate passing a resolution with the Petaluma City Schools with support for Climate Action and our school district. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, oh, sorry, Jennifer, she's got a question.
What are some ideas that other schools are including in resolutions? A couple examples?
Just a couple examples are curricular and educational opportunities, facilities and operational priorities such as drought-tolerant landscaping and energy-efficient facilities when renovations take place, and targets for reducing district greenhouse gas emissions even further. Those are just a couple examples. And the whole goal is not to add additional financial burden, but using what we can within our means to just be more smart about climate action for our communities.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do a lot of that for some. Okay, our next topic. Got three folks who'd like to speak about Cherry Valley's class size. Jennifer, where are you? Want to come on up? I mean, I feel like we're on first name basis. Come on in.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Stoneman. My third time speaking here, and I just want to keep the discussion going, because I know enrollment for schools just ended last week. And so I know for our school at Cherry Valley, we've been trying to figure out what our enrollment seems like next year, and getting ready to not only re-enroll our current students, but bring in new students. And the concern still lies with how big the classes are going to be. For the majority of this year, we had an over 25 to one ratio with our teachers and students. And we were told in the very beginning of the year, when the issue first came up and the parents were concerned, that this was because charters were exempt from the grade span adjustment, which is the funding that's supposed to keep those class sizes lower. And I'm now recently, after asking for funds to be reallocated and trying to find where that we can find that money to help keep our class sizes lower, I'm now finding out that we actually have the funding. And we do get the grade span adjustment funding for keeping our class sizes lower. But at a charter, there's nothing that says that we have to have those class sizes lower, even with the funding. And so with the majority of this year being at a higher ratio than the other schools with our classes, and feeling those effects in our classrooms, you've heard people talk before, I'm sure people are gonna talk about it tonight, that it's had an effect on our school. Our school is very special in the way our teachers teach, and how much our teachers love, love our school and have been at our school, and it's because it's a program that works. We're a project-based school, we're environmental education, and we work in groups, and we have the multi-age classrooms, and all of this works because our class sizes are the size that they are. And this year, and I know it goes and ebbs and flows, and there's bubbles in the enrollment, but when there's a higher enrollment, when you have that bubble, it doesn't work the same. And you have kids that are getting sort of lost in that. You have kids that are doing really well in school, but because they're doing so well, they get kind of, they get ignored because they're doing so well, and the teachers are having to focus more on the other kids. And then you have the kids that aren't doing so well, that are also getting somewhat ignored because the teachers don't have the time and ability to help those kids with such a big class size. We're lucky enough that, not lucky that children left our school, but because they did, our average now is under 24. The concern is for next year. The concern is that before it's too late, we're still trying to keep those class sizes. I know now it's negotiated that, I just learned on Friday, that's been negotiated to a one to 25. And so there's that bump up of the ratio of what we can still have to have that grade span adjustment funding. And even at one to 25, it's better than having 28 kindergarten first graders in four classes and having 21, 28, you know, up to 28 in the two-three. It's just, it's too much. And the kids are getting, I don't want to say punished, but I feel like they are, and it's affecting everybody. The loss of our counselor for two days a week, it's getting affected. And these kids that had issues before were able to go and talk to our counselor, and now she's not there on the days that she needs to be there. And on the days she is there, she's not able to help all the kids that are going through all the anxiety and distress of having the same teacher that they had last year, but it's, it's being taught differently, because they're now working with a larger class size. My son, who actually did see our counselor a lot from kindergarten until second grade, is now a third grader, and he doesn't see her anymore. And when I asked him why, he said, "Well, with her not there as much, she only sees the kids with big problems." And it's heartbreaking to see that he needs to see somebody that's not there, and a lot of this need is because our classrooms are bigger. And a lot of the parents that you've heard before are having, probably, they're volunteering in our classrooms, because there's the need to have parents there. We've always been a community of strong volunteers, but now we're a community of people that are having to overextend themselves to volunteer, because they don't feel like their children are getting what they need without being in that classroom to help out those teachers. So I just ask for you guys to, I know the enrollment is the same, we've been told it's the same at every school, and I understand you enroll the same, but because we're a charter, once the other schools are full, we're technically able to continue to keep those kids and keep enrolling children. And we're just asking to really truly enroll the same and keep our class sizes the same size and the same student-to-teacher ratio as the other schools. Thank you.
I feel like I just want to make mention, as far as continuing the education, we are, have been continuing to go up to school, have conversations, correct? Had meetings?
I mean, I, yes. I met with the parents last week, and went over budgeting and revenues and that type of thing. I know that Cliff and Kim have been meeting as well, right?
Yeah, we haven't been at in a while, but yeah, we had, we had subsequent meetings after the last, after the initial meetings, and she just had one recently, so more specifically with budget.
And I think part of the conversation that we had last week is that we really need to continue having the dialogues, that we can be transparent and provide information on budgets and staffing ratios, et cetera.
I'm a little, a little confused, if we could clarify. It's my impression that in regards to the balloon effect and getting more, having more students in a class can go both ways, meaning if you're allowed to have 24 kids in a class, can I, it's informational.
Yeah, I'm gonna take your question. So, yeah, you're right. Yes, so-
Over here. You know I'm gonna ask.
The issue at Cherry Valley is that they lost a significant number of students in a grade span, because they got their double grade span adjustment, their K1, 2, 3. They should have four teachers, 2, 3. They don't have four teachers, 2, 3, because they lost so many students that they went down to three teachers instead of four. What we're trying to do is to build, and it ebbs and flows because of the number of kinders that come in this, each year. They have high numbers of kid, they have high numbers of kinders that are now first graders, but they have low numbers of kinders currently, and their current second grades were low, and their current third grades were low. So if we can stabilize enrollment, that will add a fourth teacher, we'll get back to four and four. And if we can get back to four and four, those numbers will automatically come down. But Cherry Valley is not an overflow school. We do not send students that fill up to Cherry Valley, we're actually trying to fill Cherry Valley, which actually drops their enrollment.
I think that's my point.
By adding a teacher. It's losing that one teacher, it's the same issue that we're having at some of our other schools. Anytime you do that, it creates problems for your average, but we're trying to keep everybody more or less at the same average. But you are going to have some situations in some schools where you have a higher number of group of kids that come in on one grade level than another. So it's honoring the neighborhood school model, honoring, you know, whatever we can. The grade span adjustment piece only says that we don't get penalized for that money, but we don't try to fill those classes up to those high numbers, 26, 27, 28. We're trying to avoid that at all costs, but at the same time, we're also not sending students away and moving them from school to school. It just doesn't happen, it's not procedurally what we do.
Because I, I know that to have a school, because I know this is happening in other schools, to have a school that's only tracking one kindergarten and one first grade, we can't sustain a district with lots of elementary schools that don't at least, at least, and Cherry's a little bit different, but at least have two first grades or two, you have to sustain. And so what I know that we were explaining is, I think, last year, the year before, I think at Grant Elementary, where, you know, if you have, you know, three, let's say we're trying to keep it something at 25 to one, to make the math easy. Once you have 27 students, we don't send 25 to one teacher and two students to another teacher. If we have to have two teachers, I need to divide the kids evenly. But once your numbers go down, you don't get to keep two classrooms of 12. Does that make sense?
No, that's correct.
And that's what people want to understand. I had a class of, you know, 20, and this teacher had a class of 19, but then when you, when the numbers drop, then we can no longer financially support that teacher from a low, small class. So I think sometimes it goes both ways. Building program also helps, because if you can build students, then you can add teachers, which reduces your class size. So I only say that because I do want you to be careful, because it sounded a little bit like you didn't want the more students. And here at Petaluma City Schools and education funding, we're drowning. We need students. And the more students you get, the more teachers you can have. And so that's what's happened at other elementary schools. This is not the first time the board has had a parent that's come for several board meetings upset about class size. That's why I want, I want you to know you're not, it's not something that's just happened in Cherry Valley. But in other schools, where once, once you're now below that threshold because you had a loss of students, a similar issue with a teacher who was upset that one year, in one grade, she was used to having a small amount, but the grade coming in had a very high amount. It wasn't that we were increasing her particular class size, it was that the grade that was coming into her had more students or had less students. Instead of having three fourth grades coming in, we're only two third grades, and so they were larger third-grade classrooms. So I just want to make sure you don't think that we're trying to fill up and maximize, and we would love to grow program at Cherry Valley and give you more teachers and have classes that are more manageable. It's just not as easy as we have, when the kids show up or don't show up, it's a numbers game. I just don't want you to think there's, we're trying to do something in Cherry, we're not doing something else.
Yeah, enrollment hasn't stopped. We are, we'll enroll all the way through August. We won't know the final numbers in Cherry Valley until the first day of school.
Right. That's another thing, that first 10 days is always tricky, too.
And then we'll have to make some additional determinations based on that. The other issue that's, and this isn't cherry-specific, but this has happened in Cherry Valley, is if you have 50 students that sign up for your school, but 50 students don't show up, which is what happened this year, there was a large number of students that chose, that said, "Yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming," they didn't come. So that impacted the number. Had those students shown up, that would have been that fourth teacher. We had 16 students, wasn't around that number, Fran? That we anticipated that went to other school sites.
Well, 14.
Anything but, I think it was, anything around, anything 13, 14, 15 was the difference. They didn't. That's really unusual, but it happens. And so you try to plan for it as best you can, but we're going to try to keep the numbers down, there's no doubt. That's our goal. But at the same time, we've got, you've got funding issues as it relates to the school, we've got to make sure that at least we're balancing our budget there, because they don't want to, you know, we want to make sure they have all the programs that they need.
Hey, can you clarify as well, that there's nothing special about a charter, that the contract limit is the same for a charter, or?
No, we staff the same way across the board. The difference is, is that you don't have an option, you don't have an option through grade span adjustment to have a 24.1 students or 24.2. You have to be at that number. Otherwise, you have what they call the death penalty. And that, the death penalty is that if one school site is, that's non-charter, is above that, then everybody loses the funding, the whole district. And how much money is that? It's about six, seven hundred thousand?
Oh, over a million.
Million? And so you lose that entire piece. So what we worked on with the Federation, wasn't to raise school size to 25 to one, it was, we didn't want to get in a situation at a grant, that we had 24.2, which is one student in grades K3, and lose a million dollars in funding. That's the issue. It was a protection for the rounding number. And so if that happens, because you can't afford to hire an additional teacher for one student, you don't have, we do not have that in our, in our budget to do that. And so it doesn't change at all what we, how we staff, we're still shooting for that number of 24 to one. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to aim for in a perfect world, it doesn't always get there. And in schools like Grant, Grant last year, or Alticneer, I speak to Alticneer, Alticneer last year in third grade, they had 28 students as an average, and they had 27 in second grade, but they had very low first grade and kinder numbers, which brought the average down below 24 to one. Kids come and go, you know, so it depends on the grade, the grade level. We don't like to see that, but this district does not have a practice of setting a hard number- of setting a hard number and saying, no matter who you are, neighborhood school or not, if as soon as you hit that hard number, you gotta go to another school. We accept the students to a, to within the contract and try to accommodate them at that school site. So that's just the practice that we have and it's, it's, we do, we, we try not to make decisions that move displaced students to other school sites.
Okay, we have two more speaker parts on this comment. Josh Glasgow.
Hi, everyone, my name is Josh Glasgow. I have a first grader at Cherry Valley. And I want to thank you all for your work and for so carefully attending to all of these complicated budgetary issues. I do want to also say thank you to Jen Stoneman, who I'm pretty sure understands everything that was just said as I've been consuming the very informational emails she's been sending. And I think, I think that that everyone's understanding of the dynamics are pretty consistent. And it's a question of how how to negotiate this, this challenge, you know, these sets of challenges that we face. So again, thank you and thank you for listening to us. I want to, I guess maybe take a slightly different tack than than what I've heard from, I was here two meetings ago. And a lot of the conversation then was about the pedagogical value of small class sizes, which I'm also sure we all agree is is great, right? Small class size, everybody wins, there's no, there's no doubt about that. But in in addition to appealing to your sense of wanting to benefit the kids and for that matter benefit the teachers and make the parents feel confident, I want to also appeal to your sense of justice. So when I was here two meetings ago, there was that budget report about how there was not enough money. But also a big piece of that was how like, I forget the exact number, but I want to say something around a thousand dollars per pupil was going to other districts that we are not getting because of our numbers of, our relative numbers of ESL, of high, highly vulnerable students, including ESL students and foster students. And there was some concern among some people on this board about whether that was fair or or something that 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 we should accept. I actually am in favor of that. I I think I want to live in a state where we're supporting our most vulnerable students and I recognize there are trade-offs there. But I wanted to also just say that the, the reason why I'm in favor of it is there seems to be a good rationale, right? These students are vulnerable. What I'm hearing here, even in just the comments a moment ago, is, is that, not that we want to raise class sizes, I hear you saying that we, nobody wants to raise class sizes, but that there is a threshold which we won't go above for non-charter schools, but that which we can go above for charter schools, just doesn't matter of law and policy. And that makes sense. As to whether that's the wisest, fairest, most just choice though, that seems to me to be more questionable. I I want to impress upon the board my, my, my feeling that while I want us to distribute resources to the vulnerable children in a maybe an unbalanced manner, to do it just because one school legally is exposed to that kind of disproportionate share of resources strikes me as a, as a much worse reason to do it. And I would encourage the board to try to find a way to distribute resources evenly, unless there is a compelling reason, like a highly vulnerable student or set of students. And I'm not seeing that in this case. And what I'm seeing is there's, there's a legal opening to doing this, this rebalancing of resources that we just don't have in other schools. And so I would, I would, I would plead with the board to try to find other ways of cutting resources evenly rather than doing it in an unbalanced way like it sounds like maybe we're doing when, when we're in a crunch and we've gotta bubble up a school and and there's one school that can can kind of tolerate that legally. So that's just something I wanted to to ask you guys to think about.
It's a state play because there's some things to be clarified.
Okay.
First off, no one bubbles up a school. We don't just, we don't do that. It's a bubble can't occur when a bunch of kids show up at Cherry Valley that weren't there before or Grant or McNear or don't show up. It creates what we call a bubble, like what happened this year, how come no one showed up? Or oh my gosh, we haven't had three kindergartens at this school in forever. Somewhere to not only caught a bubble because it's something different than that school's experience.
I didn't mean bubble in a technical sense. You guys use it in a specialized way.
No, no, I just want you to think that we try and staff over here.
I don't think that.
The other thing is, it were, two things. One, I'm not sure, I still am not sure grade span adjustment funding is being understood. It's not money we distribute, it's money that the state gives for non-charter schools. And if we mess up on our numbers, they strip it from all non-charter schools. It's not money that goes to charter schools, it's money that risks, it's a completely different thing. Now, Chris, you.
Just, just to clarify, grade span adjustment, all schools get it. All schools generate the grade span adjustment.
It's just we get stripped if we mess up numbers.
Right, so the, so they'll set that funding, it happens the same across the entire district, charter, non-charter? We get a certain base and then we get grade span adjustment for students in K through three, to K through three. The difference is that that fatality or the penalty clause, the fatality clause, whatever you wanna call it, it only applies to non-charters. So the funding is the same, but what's different is that if a charter goes over that twenty-four to one threshold.
It strips our whole district.
Yes, if a charter goes over, then we don't have that same risk. So that, it's a risk that non-charters take that charters don't take.
Okay, and I have two, two other questions. One question I want to ask you is, I was under the impression that there are rules that are different for charters, including other funding. I, I just, I, I was in the impression that the charter schools do get more funding than the non-charters.
I think that in the past, that was accurate.
Okay.
So under the form of revenue limit, in our particular case, Cherry Valley as an authorized charter under this high school district, they received the benefit of high school basic, of high school revenue limit base, which was higher than an elementary revenue limit base. Plus, there was a charter block grant that used to exist. But on the LCFF, all of that went away and everybody, regardless of the authorizing entity, you get one amount K through three, one amount four through six, one seven, eight, one nine, twelve, with the grade span adjustment applied then to the K through three.
So is that part of what's creating the problem of understanding that some of that money has shifted and gone away? Now we're trying to fund that school like everything else?
I think that, I think that there's probably elements to that, yes. I think that a program was designed around a different fun, funding model that shifted five years ago. So I think that that could be part of, part of what's happening, so, but I, you know, I can't say for sure. But there definitely was a shift.
And then the other thing you said, just to clarify, because I know I'm the one that was discussing it at that meeting and was very hot tempered about it. It's not that we don't think that the state has done a great job, as I said, that well-intended, that there are students that need more funding. The thing I'm concerned about is how disproportionate it is and they're now leaving the middle-class districts, they can even call it that, behind. If you don't have enough of those students, you're not getting funding. And there are schools, it's not just a thousand dollars more per student, per year, it's thousands. It's a lot of money. And the other problem that I worry about is while there are agencies that monitor our local control accountability plan, our big document at the end of year that says, for that money we're getting for those students, look at what we're doing for them. In my perception right now, and working hard on that committee and, and working with legislators, there doesn't seem to be a big plan. In other words, if we start having a problem with our LCAP where we're not able to prove to the county and thus the state that we're doing well by those students and using that money properly, the state does have a, a, a way to come in and help and guide. But I don't see the governor having anybody that's got a big umbrella, umbrella over all of this saying, okay, so we've been doing this for a few years and some schools are getting thousands and thousands and thousands, totaling to millions of dollars more for those districts. Is it working? I don't see that global look over our state education monies as something that's on anyone's radar. And so I want to know if another school is gonna get that much more money. I mean, we are really struggling to pay teachers, to pay staff. We, we are really struggling to get our deficit spending down, to get kids to come to the school. We're in a time in education now where people can choose to go to whatever school, Cherry Valley, Grant, McNear, Warner Park, Nevada, Nevada, High students here today, I'd love for them to come back to our district. So we're all trying to design programs to do amazing things on no money. Very frustrating. So it's not that I don't definitely agree that it was a very well-intended. I just, I want to see that it's working and I think there's a lot of us that are concerned, it's a little too big of a gap, it's a little too much. So I didn't want you to think I don't.
No, I heard you say that.
Support the intent.
I heard, yes.
I have just another clarifying question. Do we staff charter schools and non-charter schools or traditional schools the same?
Yes.
Yes. So we don't.
Yes.
We don't look at Cherry Valley or?
No, yes, we just look at them the same way.
And we staff to the same contract?
Every school right now is meeting grade span adjustment, charter or not. I mean, the, the, the issue again is in the uniqueness of the enrollment and how enrollment is playing out at Cherry Valley.
Right, 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 okay, so that's a definition.
Because, because there's one other piece to it, is being a K eight, there's a sustainability model that's unique, because my, my daughters went to a K eight and it's similar to a K eight structure. And you, in order to sustain seventh and eighth grade, because you are gonna have a bleed out, you're gonna lose kids, some kids are gonna, are gonna go to Kanoworth or Pedantic Junior, you need to have a certain number coming through so that you can have a sustainable class, that you can have a class. Like right now, Cherry Valley's class is less than the numbers at, at our, at our comprehensives at those grades because there's some loss, you know, you, I mean, we expect that. So, you, you know, we're really looking at, you know, there's no magic number, but this will continue to be a problem if there are numbers of, of, of enrollment at forty per grade level. Now, this will be a, a situation because you have, you've got, well, these may be a little bit old, but this is the most updated ones I have. You have fifty-two first graders, but you only have forty-two kinders. So those kinders go to first grade, that means you have to match them with something in the fifties to do that. And so in, in, in the situation at Cherry Valley, the more students you have, it sounds counterintuitive, but I'm, I'm happy to sit down with folks who show up staffing, the more students there are, the lower the class sizes can become because you have options that you can navigate with that. But the challenge at the site is what's an accurate number? And that's really hard. We won't know until kids actually show up in July because the numbers the last two years have not been accurate for those grade levels. And so remember when we look at class size reduction, that's TK to third grade average. That doesn't mean that all those classes are twenty-four to one, some classes are twenty-eight to one. We certainly try to, to not have that happen at kindergarten and first grade as much as possible, but it does happen in some schools. But the average across the district, every school is currently meeting class size reduction rules by the way that the class size reduction law is set up. So it's, it's a challenge, you know, and so we are trying to get people to Cherry Valley. And we will work with them. We'll go through, we're gonna go through quite a bit of work with Cherry Valley on this one because they do care about it, they want what's best for their kids. We want to be able to explain it. It, it is complicated to walk through all of the nuances of all of this. But our first step will be to look at our initial numbers. I will tell you that looking at, looking at data from previous years, that set, setting artificial caps, can't do that in a district to start with, but setting artificial caps at the school created some of this issue because it was like, no, we're not taking any more than twenty-four kids, but the twenty-four kids didn't come. They didn't come. So we would rather be in a situation where we accepted a lot more and they come and then we're in a situation where we're like, well, we don't have enough for, we have too many for four classes, but we don't have enough for five. We'd add a fifth class to keep those kids. We'd be better off to get as many kids as possible to come. And the real issues at, at Cherry Valley, when you look at the numbers, are the, currently are kinder, second, and third grade because all of those are right at forty or just they're, that's a very, very low number. And so, you know, it's a challenge.
So we just, we don't staff Cherry Valley or any other charter school differently than we staff?
Nope, staff them all the same. We do have in contract, we, we have two particular sections in the bargaining unit that are used for, traditionally for underperforming schools to reduce class size and that we do allocate those to our underperforming schools, which traditionally have been McDowell and McKinley, one additional section of teachers. So we do do that.
All right, thanks for hearing our concerns.
Kirsten. I say Kirsten. My name is Kirsten DePerrier and I have two children who attend Cherry Valley. I have a second grader and a third grader. So they both have been impacted by the class increase. At some points this year, class sizes were indeed twenty-seven and twenty-eight children per class. I volunteer in both of their classes, two days a week, sometimes three, depending upon what's going on at the school. And while I appreciate budgets, policies, and all of that good stuff, I have a corporate business background, I thought I would come here tonight and let you guys know from, I guess, the children's perspective, what it's like being there in a class with twenty-seven to twenty-eight, seven and eight-year-olds. The classes are crammed full of kids, for lack of a better term. There is no personal space whatsoever for the children to learn and even just have enough room to be. The classes are small and there's a bunch of kids. And at times, the environment can be extremely chaotic. And when you put twenty-seven to twenty-eight kids in one class with a teacher, with no teacher's aid or anything like that, and couple that with children who have learning disabilities and emotional disabilities, it's inevitable that children are getting left behind. So because I am in there at a minimum of two days a week, I'm seeing kids that I've known since kindergarten not only not progress to a level where they should be in the second and third grade, but barely be able to read or do math, let alone learn grammar. And so really, I wanted to come here tonight and let you know that, again, while I know that you don't consider them just numbers on a piece of paper, that these policies and these bubbles or however you want to describe it that are happening right now at Cherry Valley are having a real detrimental effect on children. And while some kids will always succeed, there are a bunch of kids that I'm seeing get left behind. And I think now, at this age, how they feel about school is really going to determine how they do later on. And so I hope that as parents and teachers and principals and school board members, that we can please try to figure out to do something because I don't think waiting another year is fair to these kids, like at all. If you're in the second and third grade, you should be able to do math and learn grammar in a less chaotic environment. And that's it.
Thank you.
I, I will tell you that my daughter's in fourth grade now and I know you know firsthand what the numbers were this year in that one class.
Oh, we have twenty-eight, we had twenty-eight, now we're twenty-seven. But in our case, it seems fine.
Right, and so, and I've heard people say this, and my argument is this. In the classrooms that I volunteer in, there are children who can't even sit still. So I think that when you go to fourth and fifth graders, nine and ten-year-olds, things have calmed down a little bit. There are children who can't sit still, can't quit talking, and simply can't concentrate on what they're doing. Because I've heard this said before, fourth and fifth graders.
No, no, my daughter, my daughter was in that class last night.
We get four thirds.
Right.
Every class makeup is different.
Right, and I think part of it also is.
I just want you to know as a parent, that I found a daughter that was in a bubble for many, many years. And I just want you to know, I guess I was trying to let you know, not defend a large class, I just wanted to let you know that. I just wanted to let you know that we are, some of us are parents up here.
Well, of course, and, and the thing is, is that I know that my kids are going to be okay. I'm a very proactive parent, we do work at home. They're up here in the class. I'm, I feel so bad for the kids that, like, are not okay at all. And so, something should be done. They just can't be passed over. It's just not fair at all. Especially for how much money it costs to live in the Cherry Valley School District.
Yeah, the whole city, huh?
Right.
Thank you. So, after hearing that, Fran, I would love to have a follow-up with you and Cliff, because it's not like there's some issues we probably should talk about in regards to classroom management and this one over there. So let's put the other, for a meeting with the three of us. Okay, because that, that sounds... Okay, with that, we're going to close public comment. Gary, can I just keep turning the arrow? Keep forgetting, I'm right next to it. Let me take my scarf off. And we are going to go to item nine, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. I forgot to take a list, so just shout it out.
Valley District fundraiser.
That was so... We just missed you, I guess. Yes, that was an absolutely lovely time.
It was good, thank you for inviting.
It was a really nice, it, it was a really fun event. Um, what else?
I went to a legal issues report.
Oh, deal.
Really interesting.
Was that at the SCO?
At SCO, yes.
Wow. How old is that?
Don't know. And I'm going to go to another one.
She's going to take the bar next year.
You're retired, you can study at the bar now?
Hey, I did mock trial for ten years.
There, well, I do quite a few need to study. And I gotta schedule a McDowell visit for us, I have not forgotten. It's, it's on my, it's on my...
I did a McDowell, I mean, sorry, Valley District school visit. And their IB program was just...
Yes, yay!
It's very impressive, Ms. Larson, it's exciting over there.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on. If you think of something, feel free to add it for Sue. Um, item ten, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any issues? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That takes us down to item eleven, action items. Eleven point one, administration human resources. Eleven point one-one, resolution seventeen eighteen dash nineteen at the Board of Education of the Pedelema City Elementary and Joint Union High School, reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of services by four point three full-time employment for the twenty eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Um, has anyone presented anything on this one, or... Where Chris goes?
The ladies' room.
Nothing? Questions, comments, issues, problems? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Eleven point two, business services. Eleven point two point one, purchase orders.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, comments?
Mic user.
Mic is out on purchase orders. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's pour with mic users. Eleven point two point two, accept... Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, my glasses. Accept and receive the property advisory committee report.
So moved.
Second.
Just, I really appreciate them spending the time that they did.
Yes.
For a moment.
They do the great job.
Very professional.
That is, okay, anything else? All in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven point three, educational services. Eleven point three point one, second reading and adoption. TMS, AP tennis? Did I say that right, Spanish tennis? AP Spanish language and culture, Casa Grande textbook adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven point three point two, second reading and adoption, new course for Casa Grande Day High for studies.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twelve, discussion information only. Twelve point one, administration human resources. Twelve point one point one, amended board policy, first reading for board policy zero four one zero, non-discrimination in district programs and activities. Does anybody have any discussion or questions on that item? Twelve, twelve point one point two, amended board policy, first reading for board policy forty-one forty and forty-two forty and forty-three forty, bargaining unit. Do you have any discussion or comments or questions on that item? Twelve point one point three, deleted board policy, first reading for board policy four one five seven point one and four two five seven point one and four three five seven point one, work-related injuries. Twelve point one point four, amended administrative regulation for AR one three one two point three, uniform complaint procedures. Twelve point one point five, amended administrative regulation for AR four one one two point two two, staff teaching English learners. Moving on, twelve point two, educational services. Twelve point two point one, first reading, Pearson Integrated High School math, Casa Grande textbook adoption.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I did email Mr. DeGraw and Mr. Gallin. Just, my question was, and you answered it, so thank you, but that we had adopted a textbook adoption several years ago, CPM for the higher levels of math, one, two, and three. And now we are adopting a second textbook for Casa Grande that's not being used. So I just, you know, it's just a concern, they... And I'm not going back in history, I, it's just a concern of mine that we have spent all that money on a textbook adoption and did all the vetting, and, and now we are taking the time to, and money to adopt a second textbook.
So technically, we didn't spend any money on CASA. So we, we bought CPM Math One books for them. We never spent any money for Math Two and Math Three. We told them we weren't going to, that they had to use teacher-designed materials or free resources, which they have for the past few years. And upon reviewing that, I guess ultimately on our end, realized, you know, in, in a way, we're not providing equal access to the curriculum by not, not allowing them to adopt anything or first anything. Granted, a lot of this happened before Gary and I came here, so this was all reactionary, the fact that they, after adopting CPM Math One, because it was implemented, CPM One, Math One first, the following year, Math One and Two, this, this current year, Math One, Two, and Three. So at the time, it's not like we bought resources and then it used them. We just never used any of the money set aside to buy them anything. So we're at the point now where they were using staff-created resources, they were using free resources, but clearly they're not up to par with what's professionally produced out there. So we had them do their own mini-pilot, look at a couple different materials and selected this. So that's where we're at.
I don't know, I feel like it's hanging out there.
I just, you know, I spent all this time adopting a textbook district-wide, and here we are, not sticking to it, so it's a concern of mine, just putting it on there.
Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, future business. Gary, I'll ask you in a second, but since you're sitting right here, and I don't know if you'll be here at the end, sir, Mr. DeGraw, I will not be at the LCAP meeting on the sixth. McKinley has their fundraiser that night, so I will be there. Sorry.
What time is it?
You want to go my, you want to go my place?
When is it, April?
It's March sixth.
Hey, March sixth. It's kind of this Tuesday, Wednesday.
Next Tuesday.
I've got it here.
Six to seven thirty. So we only have two, right?
Okay, so Frank, Ellen, y'all go switch, flip coin, because four standing members wants to go.
Oh, okay, do you want to go? I'll go to the next one.
Okay.
So, six to seven thirty?
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Gary, anything?
We have the, you're, you're all invited to attend, if you're available, on Thursday, the Innovation Showcase, where students are going to be showing their different innovative ideas and projects that they've done.
That's this Thursday?
Yeah, I believe it's at the Lucchese.
Yeah.
Lucchese, five, five thirty to seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty, so, so I encourage you to grab something, just pop by for a half hour.
I was going to ask, is it a pop-in and out?
Yeah, it's just a pop-in and out. Kids are actually doing presentations, they would love to, to have you pick their brain on what they did.
And that's at the Lucchese Center?
Yes.
And what's the date there?
Thursday.
The first, March first, at five thirty. Five thirty for two hours?
So anytime in those two hours.
Fair enough.
Sure, fair enough. You'll, you'll email me about funding a type of meeting on Fran? Anything else? My wants my twice. Okay, so we don't have anything to report out yet, because we are reconvening to our post-session in the back.
Okay, I have a question, I have a question before. What's, what do we do as a follow-up to the seven-eleven committee recommendation, just so we make it, what's the next step?
The next step?
Because we accepted this, I think.
Yes, we approved it.
Because we approved it. So where, where we go, see?
The next step is this, is we spoke with our attorney today, and Chris and, and our attorney are going to be working on a public hearing notice that needs to go out to public hearing, a sixty-day public hearing notice during that time.
The notice needs all the public entities that are prescribed in law, that we have to kind of give opportunity first, we'll be starting on that.
Yeah, that's our next step.
Yes.
Get, get that notice out.
But stay tuned, there will definitely be more to come at the upcoming morning. Okay. All right, we are not adjourned, so to speak, because we are high-tail on it back to closing. All right. All right, that brings us to item eight, comments from the public. Do I have all my cards for those that want to speak? Okay. There's nobody in the back that hasn't filled out a card yet? Oh, okay, okay, so the first two I ha- oh, let me read my things, because I know we have more than just employees in the room, sorry. Employees, it's hard to hear it over and over and over again, sometimes I don't read it, there's just one or two. Okay, so I'm going to read this little, as, as, you know, I'm looking for it. It's been a long day. Okay, I'm going to read it to you, what's on the speaker card, so we know about the rules in regards to speaking. The first two in the front row knows this, but I see we got some students in the back. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any item or items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy BP E nine three two three, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy BP AR one three one two point one, specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action, nor do they discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. So I know my first couple folks understand all of that, but for the other folks that may be new to public speaking, what that means... I think that must be, is there some students, right? I can see you back there, okay, I thought so. Okay, so what that means is, if it's not an item on the agenda, we can't have a lot of dialogue with you about whatever you're coming to speak about, because it means the rest of the community didn't know we'd be discussing that, and we're not allowed to make decisions without advising the community what we're making decisions on. So sometimes when you come to speak, I have a little comment, we say, well, watch, thank you so much, and we move on. It feels a little like, really, that's, that's it? But I, I came and I spoke, I worked up my courage, and, and we want you to know that we, we, we do listen, we do hear you. We can ask clarifying informational questions. What day was that? Where can I find even more information on that, things like that? But we can't discuss what we might like to do about an issue. Do we have a little bit of info for you students? That we actually, we're a little behind you. I know you guys have been contacting us about this, and we did, the superintendent and I discussed it yesterday morning, and it's been busy. I'm sorry we haven't gotten to you. So we do have a little info that we can share with you that's informational, I believe. We don't do any booing or cheering. I don't think that's going to be a problem with the issues tonight, but sometimes when you're here and you're passionate about something and everyone wants to clap, there might be somebody in the room that has a different opinion, and now they might be intimidated to get up and speak for fear that you'll boo them. So we could do jazz hands, which has been kind of popular lately. Okay, so with that, there's a lot of students, I'm going to do you guys a second, and I'm going to get to Melissa first. Come on down first. Just so you know, someone did put, make Melissa go first. Yeah. We have a quarter here. All right, so I am Melissa McGary, I teach at San Antonio High School. I teach English, and I'm here to talk about alternative education. And I'm going to be saying "we" a lot, because I'm speaking for the five Altead schools, San Antonio, Valley Oaks, Carpe, Sonoma, and Crossroads. I've been in the district for eleven years, and my colleagues, all but one, are tenured. So we're not here to fight for our jobs tonight, we're here to advocate for alternative education students. Our programs are WASC-accredited, and we're very proud of this. We hold a high bar for our students, aligning curriculum to the Common Core standards, not just handing them packets like other alternative education programs. So as you consider changes this year, we want to ask, what's the goal? Is our goal to simply hand students a diploma by all means necessary? Or is our goal to give them the education they deserve? If you only look at the numbers of teachers to students, yes, it does seem like we're an expensive program. Our contract says twenty to one, and we keep going back to that number. But we're more valuable than those numbers show. We're valuable because of what we do for the district's graduation rate. For years, the board has recognized that in the past we've helped the district reach that over ninety percent graduation rate. Altead schools are responsible for roughly thirteen to fifteen percent of that rate. Our value is in the number of SARB students who have begun to regularly attend school. Fifty-eight percent of current students have been SARB'd or received a SARB letter in the past. Their current non-tenure rate is eighty-one percent. Our value is in the relationships that teachers are able to nurture because of the small class sizes. The district has spent a lot of time and money training us on trauma-informed classrooms, all of the ACE's research that Nikki and Dave have shared with us. Our mental health counselors regularly see sixty percent of our students. The research all points to the idea that students with high trauma rates will be best served by being in small classrooms, because the most important factor in helping these students is a relationship with a consistent caring adult. In the past few years, the adult contacts at our school have been significantly reduced. In two thousand fourteen, a teacher retired and the position was not filled. In two thousand fifteen, our daycare was shut down, and we lost two caring adults who not only worked with teen parents, but also worked with students who worked in the daycare as an elective. In two thousand sixteen, the district cut our attendance clerk and one full-time teacher. That's a reduction of five adults, five caring adults who made daily connections with students. Twenty to one equates to three minutes per student in each class to receive one-on-one instruction that they need. Cutting more teachers at our school site could mean cutting electives, art, Spanish, PE, leadership, yearbook, the types of classes that our students really need as an outlet and to feel like part of the community. Art, Spanish, and PE are also used as high school graduation requirements. If our program is whittled down to twenty to one, our students won't have any choices. They'll only have core classes. I don't know how we could retain our WASC accreditation with no electives. At San Antonio High School, we've added thirty-two students this year. Thirteen more are expected next week. What will happen to students who need to transition to Altead mid-year? Will we be able to add those students in the future, or are they just going to have to wait till the next year while they are not succeeding at the comprehensive high schools? So I've been told that alternative education must reduce two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in personnel costs, when the district is reducing four hundred thousand in personnel costs. We serve the most vulnerable, most disadvantaged students in the district. By cutting more t-... By cutting more teachers, you need to recognize, please, recognize that you're valuing dollars over the best interest of our students. And I believe that is what you consider most important, the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Kylie?
I'm Kylie Giacini-Haines, and I wanted to just kind of echo what Melissa was saying. I, I first want to just say thank you, though, to the board members and the service that you give our community. And I have been a part of this community in the Petaluma City Schools for 28 years, and I thank Frank Lynch for that. He hired me 28 years ago.
Did one thing right.
And I have, I've loved this, this school district so much, and three of my sons have gone through, and I now have a daughter who's in kindergarten at McNear, and I'm fully invested in this community. And I, this is actually the first time I've addressed the board too, in 28 years. So I just want to kind of couch it that way and let you know how important this is to me, how passionate I am about the situation that's facing our Altead students. And the idea that we might have these large classes, and whereas, you know, 28 years, or 24 years at Petaluma High School, having 20 kids in a class, that was a dream, we used to have that with ninth graders in English, it was wonderful. But these are the kids that need, as you know, the most attention. They need that relationship with their, with the teacher. You need that hands-on with those kids. And when I think about being in a classroom with 20 of these kids, I just, it breaks my heart for, for them. And I'm not honestly sure how I would be an effective instructor. And that's always been, whether I'm teaching honors English or I am teaching after-school English, you know, from the, from the tip-top kids that we saw today that were so impressive, to the kids that we have that, to me, are equally as impressive in the fact that they're showing up and that with all of their background, with the trauma that they've endured, many of them in their lives, the, that they, that they can come to school and they really do want to learn. So, you know, our, our little shirts here rise from the ashes. That's what, this is a phoenix, and that's who we are. That's what our kids are trying to do, because their academic lives, and in many, for many of them, their social lives, their, their family lives wore ashes, and they are attempting to rise from this. So I would just ask that you really consider these, these students, and I know that you do, but 20 to 1 is just almost an impossibility. So, please. And then one more, one more little thing I'm concerned with, is that we're talking about, there's talk about potentially bringing Crossroads over to San Antonio. And I understand the reasons for that. I just want to throw out one concern, is that these students in Crossroads are basically siloed. They're, they're put, you know, what, seventh, eighth grade, they're put in their own little environment. I'm not going to judge good, bad, whatever. But what concerns me is if they are on San Antonio's campus, that there won't necessarily be this push to get them into the bigger, into the high schools once they finish Crossroads, that it'll be the comfortable thing to just join us in San Antonio. And there's so many rich, rich programs at both Casa and Petaluma High School for these students that might grab them and really give them a vision and something they want to move forward to. As, as Melissa aptly said, we're cutting, you know, we're cutting and losing and losing. So potentially, these students, if they come to us as, you know, sophomores or juniors, they're not going to have that rich menu of choices that they would have at the big schools. So that's just a, excuse me, a concern for me, and I just wanted to put that out there on the, just put it out in the world for you. So I just, again, want to thank you so much for all the work that you do for our students, and I'm there with you. And I would love to, I know at San Antonio, we would love to invite all of you to our campus and have further this discussion about creating a real clear vision for all education in Petaluma and kind of create a think tank and be able to be involved in a dialogue around this. So, thank you so much.
So I, I want you to know that for not even a second do we think you're here complaining. Right, bitching or complaining or whining about woe is me. We are super proud that we have the programs we have, from, you know, the opportunity to have an adult program, which no one has, to the alternative stuff that we have. I think you had a daughter that.
Yeah, she had to Valley Oaks.
Valley Oaks, and are, one of our former board members did as well. What I would encourage you to do is to help me. I need help, because I was up at the Capitol three or four weeks ago, begging for money. Begging for a restructure of the low control funding formula, dollars. I would love to look at you and say, this is just about us prioritizing what we value, we're drowning. That, I, I'm, I'm not kidding, we are drowning. Public education is in trouble. I need help. I can't squeeze any more dollars out of anything. I need you guys to help me, I need you to write, I need Levine to hear from you, I need McGuire to hear from you, I need Dodd to hear from you, and I need him to hear these things you're telling us, because we spent a day with them. They all but told us, actually, one did tell us, maybe with the next governor. I get it, because I'm up here, and everything we cut brings somebody telling us how desperately we can't cut that. And I tell you what, you are so right about relationships, because it's at the traditional junior highs, we did some surveys, we asked a bunch of different questions, a bunch of different ways, and guess what came through loud and clear? I'm starving for adult relationships. And the more of them that don't find them, they're going to end up with you, which is a good thing for a small school environment, except for the fact that we're lacking in room and we're lacking adults, right? It's like, it's like a hamster wheel. So I don't mean to be too preachy, but I'm honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm not sleeping at night, and I'm a little desperate. And I just, I would really welcome some help, because we have got to convince some folks that the disproportionate amount of money that's going to other places, to larger districts, thousands of dollars per student, per year, than we're getting. It's really not fair, and it's not enough, and it's driving districts like ours into the ground. And I just really don't know what else we're going to do. So I don't want you to think for a second that we don't value your program and know how golden we already have it. I want you to know that there's nobody up here that doesn't, doesn't know how hard you guys work and what you guys are doing for those students, and we are, we are eternally grateful. And we will listen, we will always keep you in mind when these cuts are coming down the road. But let's, let's go back, let's go to the Capitol, let's write some letters, let's do some work, because it's, it's not going to get better if we don't fight for what should be ours for our students. We'll come to San Antonio and work on that too, okay? Thank you for coming to stand up, Ms. students, I really appreciate it. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to, I got a bunch of cards, so let me count them really quick. Did you count them? Okay, so we have seven, we're supposed to only do 20 minutes, let's. Well, yeah, let's go, let's go, we'll go a little, we'll go about three minutes each. I forgot on top Lucy London, unless somebody, I don't see a sticky note like last group making someone else go first. So Lucy's ready to come on down, come on down.
Someone wants to go first, actually.
Absolutely, who wants to go first? Oh, Emma Hoffman. And who are you, sir?
I'm Jonah Gottlieb.
Thank you. Okay, I got you. All right, take it away, three minutes, well, yours.
I'm a sophomore at Credo High in Ranor Park, but I attended Petaluma City Schools kindergarten to eighth grade. And Lucy and I spoke, I think in February, about the resolution. And I'd just like to thank you for welcoming, welcoming us back again. So I'm going to be brief, because we have people that have really worked hard to say what they, prepare what they want to say, and I'd like to let them talk. But I have a sample resolution. Again, what we said in February was that we'd like to have a resolution passed by Earth Day, which is April 22nd, so 12 days away, and we're really hoping to get that done. We, I mean, you'd be joining districts across Sonoma County, across Marin County. We're extending across the country now. We have, we're working with people in Ohio, we have people on the East Coast, we have people down in LA, Orange County. And please just jump on the bandwagon and just keep working with us. I don't know who I give this to.
We've got, I've got, it could be Nancy.
So we have, yeah, so we have these sample resolutions. And again, this is really just about creating political will. So it's partially about educating the next generation about the dangers of climate change, but it's also showing elected officials in Congress that we, that all our school boards are behind us in this when we say that we need, we need change. And we're not getting it right now, so just having this public support would just really go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy, am I, am I skipping you again?
Yeah, I'll go last.
Okay. Emma Hoffman.
Hi, I unfortunately don't have any snacks or food to do, so sorry. My name is Emma Hoffman, I'm a senior at Petaluma High School. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the new field at Petaluma High, it's looking gorgeous, and I can't wait to graduate when it comes June. And I'd also like to thank you for approving the cooperative Casa and Petaluma Marine Science Program. I unfortunately won't participate in it since I am a senior, but I'm really proud to see it happening here in Petaluma, and I can't wait to see the generations of scientists that'll inspire. I'm here tonight to talk about climate change, because it's a subject that's really significant to me. It's a generational issue, for one thing, because my generation and future generations will have to bear the burden of past generations' actions. We're going to have to worry about inconsistent and extreme weather patterns, like devastating floods and severe droughts, which I'm sure we've all had enough of already.
That was the one.
We forgot to reset.
And it's only just begun. Climate change is a very real, very important issue, and it's also very complicated, but there are steps that we can take. In fact, we've already started in some major ways. The solar panels at Petaluma High, for example, are an amazing way to start reducing the carbon footprint at our schools, and I want to thank you for those. So we can make an, an impact on this big nebulous problem looming in our future. With that in mind, I implore you to discuss and pass the district, district resolution similar to West Sonoma County Union High School District, Credo High School, or the Sonoma County Office of Education, like they provided here. These schools are establishing climate change committees, they're recognizing that climate change is a generational issue and a human rights issue. They're calling on Congress to take swift, effective action on climate change to protect students, and they're not alone. Many districts are starting to speak up and take action across California and across the nation, and I urge you to do the same. School boards are elected officials, and your responsibility is to prepare students for their best possible futures. With climate change as such a huge threat to our generation, if you address it by creating and passing a climate change, climate change resolution, excuse me, then you're taking direct action for the safety and future of us children. I know student voices are important to you as members of the school board, so please listen to mine. I want my school, my district, and my generation to be able to say we did something meaningful when we face such a giant problem as climate change. I want to be able to look my grandchildren in the eye one day and tell them that when my world was struggling, I did what I could to help it. I want to be a force for positive change, please help me be that. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, it's hard, right? That's silly, because your husband's not going to have you disagreeing. Set that out loud, that was not your voice. Diana?
Hello, first off, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here today and talk to you about the issue of climate change. I'm Diana Treeblood, and I'm a senior at Petaluma High School, and I'm part of the PHS Marine Science Class. And I'm here to speak for my family, friends, and my fellow classmates about climate change. Climate change is one of the most important issues today. It is sometimes overlooked and not thought of as a priority and pushed aside. At Petaluma High School, we have made improvements to reduce our effects on climate change, such as the water fountains that have been put in that have saved many plastic bottles from entering the oceans, and also having the solar panels put in that have saved the amount of energy we consume. I have been a part of the United Angels of Casa Grande, where we got the couch and tag well, Chinook salmon, where I've seen with my own eyes the effects that climate change has on these animals and the environment around them. I also volunteer at the Marine Mammal Center, where I've seen hand-on effects of climate change on marine mammals and on baby elephant seals who are starving because of changing fish migrations. When I learned about schools for climate action and that they are trying to pass resolutions acknowledging climate change in communities and school districts, it made me want to speak up about it. By adopting this resolution, it would really change the future of this community and the future of climate change. One of the key parts of solving climate change is in education, and through that, teaching people the importance of every environment on earth and not taking them for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, it's a blind. Andy Ferguson.
Good evening, my name is Andy Ferguson. I'm the proud father of two graduates of this school district. One, Sasha, graduated from Columbia Ortho Doctorate recently, and is now employed in Washington DC at Buffett Health. So thank you very much for the wonderful work you've done for my family. I now have a granddaughter in kindergarten here. I'm speaking in, in support of the students who are talking about climate change tonight. I'm on the steering committee of the Citizens Climate Lobby. We lobby directly in Washington DC to pass climate legislation, particularly the carbon fee and dividend, which would, is essentially a carbon tax, which is then returned to all citizens in the country in the form of a dividend to each citizen equally. It turns out to be a progressive tax, because those of us who fly on planes more end up paying more for our airplane tickets, and people that use less carbon get back more than they, they pay for the tax. I'm not going to go into the wonderful points that the students are making here tonight, I just want to say this. I've lobbied in Washington DC, I've gone from office to office of congressmen on both sides of the aisle, trying to move the needle on this issue, we've had some success. Our Climate Solutions Caucus in Washington DC has an equal number of Democrats and Republicans. We've gone from 16 members a year ago January to 72 members of that caucus now. We've had impact on climate legislation, but nothing is going to move the needle like students marching into Washington DC and telling them to get their hind ends in, in action here. Nothing works better than that. When we approached Jared Huffman with our, to talk about what the students are doing, he finally got excited. He's been saying all along, there's nothing I can do until I get a new Congress, and now he's realizing that this is the thing that really needs to happen. We saw it with the gun situation, now we need to see it with the climate situation. Anything you can do, including passing a resolution and supporting curricula that addresses this issue would be tremendously helpful, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work outside of this evening. Annika Jorgensen.
Hi, I'm Annika, I do have allergies today, so apologize in advance if I trip myself by sneezing. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Climate change is one of the biggest challenges our generation is going to face, and I believe the effects will last for generations after us as well. My name is Annika Jorgensen, I go to Petaluma High School, and I'm here to speak up for my family, friends, my marine biology classmates, my community, and hopefully my children in the future. I'd also like to thank the board for the hard work that they've already done to improve the school as a whole, as well as the steps that you've taken to reduce our contribution to climate change, including solar panels and the carbon lot, water fountains to save plastic water bottles, a lot of things that my classmates have already mentioned. However, climate change is an issue that we can't fix overnight. No matter how much work we do as a district, there will always be more that needs to be done, and it shouldn't just be left up to the school board. There's a lot that students can be doing on our own. In Petaluma High's marine biology class with Mr. Chikada, we learn all about the different causes and effects of climate change, as well as what we can do to stop it. This class has had a major effect on me, and in the past two years, I've been volunteering at the Marine Mammal Center, where I've learned and had the opportunity to see firsthand what climate change is doing to our marine mammals. Watching a malnourished seal on the brink of death recover and return to the water has taught me that even though all I did was sort fish and clean pen floors, I helped in my own small way, and that was what made all the difference. I believe this is one of the most important things we can be teaching to the next generation. Rather than leaving climate change to the science classes, we can be incorporating it into all of the required classes as well. History classes can include historical information on climate change, while English classes can do readings focused around the subject. can do readings focused around the subject. I'd also like to encourage school, the school board, to pass a resolution calling for climate change action, action from the Congress and promising to do more work towards reducing our impact on the environment as a district, just like the great work you've already done. For any action to be taken by the government, all Americans have to show their support and prove that this issue is important to the majority of our citizens. The board represents all the students in our district, and by speaking up for our future, you're ensuring that our voices are heard in a way we just can't yet. I hope you'll consider the importance of this resolution and of teaching about climate change in other required classes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, Lucy, get prepared, we don't have one ahead of you. Sheila Baker.
I'm gonna be really brief because those remarks have been wonderful, the points have been really, the students are absolutely wonderful. I am actually, I'm Sheila, and I actually just live right there, and leave, and I just really would like to say, for my peer group, seniors really care about what's going to happen to their grandchildren. And I think it's, and I, you know, some of you may be grandparents, and I think that it's just to say that we live in fear, you know, that this planet is changing. We of course want to live, leave this place better than we found it, but it's gonna be a little bit opposite, because when we started like seven decades ago, or six, it was just a much more simple place, and now it's just absolutely, in some areas, just horrendous. And I'm so pleased that the students of Petaluma and like Pamprow are doing a great job and have realized that they need a resolution, and a climate change resolution. And I think that it's remarkable that seven other districts have passed a resolution. And again, I can't say too much more because it's been said, and it's been said so by the students and Mr. Ferguson. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One moment. Got it, thank you. I think I deleted an accident. Okay, come on down, Lucy London.
Hello, I'm Lucy London. I spoke last February, but I wanted to come again and reiterate our goal of passing a climate action resolution. I just want to say again that this, this resolution is, it's, it shouldn't be a costly thing, it's not supposed to, like, it's not, I don't want to put too much pressure on you to do things, I mean, obviously, I would like more sustainable things around the school district, but you are, you guys are already doing a really great job with that. This is more to increase political will. It's, as Andy said, I, I signed up to go to the DC lobbying date in June, it's the International CCL Conference, and so I'll be lobbying congressmen and, and, and that is so, but, sorry. Starting on this local level is the most important way we can get to that higher level, we can make change that way, and so I think this resolution is really important to make change, and actual change on a national level, and so I really encourage you guys to pass this, and thank you.
Thank you. Lucy, what high school are you from?
Nevada High.
What can I do to get you, but not just get?
Yeah.
Was that allowed?
That was allowed. I was.
Great job, Lucy. Okay, so, I have a couple of ideas here. One, wrote some notes, I want to address a couple of things. I'm gonna start off with the bad. I can't get a resolution passed by Earth Day.
That's okay.
My apologies, because I know you guys were ahead of the curve and we fell behind, so my apologies on that. I really, I didn't write who said it, maybe Annika? Maybe you can see it? That the board represents all of the students, particularly when you're discussing about political will. You know, when you get on the board, it's such an evolution of who you become as a board member, and I will tell you, that's exactly kind of where I am in my career on the board right now, is realizing that, we try to do as much as we can for students right here, the decisions we make, but it's really important that we speak up and we, you know, stand with you in, in decisions with the government above us and beyond us to, to help, you know, right things from financing to, to issues that are caught in our schools like the climate change. So I couldn't agree with you more, and you hit the nail on the head with that one, so I'm glad you did a wonderful job. Let's see, informationally speaking, so the superintendent and I had an abnormally busy couple of months, and this has been on our radar, and I apologize that it wasn't actually on our agenda tonight. We had also hoped to do some more, and if you can, without diving into issue, refresh my memory, because I think we wanted originally to reach out to the science department at the high schools, and we were gonna try to start and do something there curriculum-wise. And I don't know, I, we just didn't get it together.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how much I should speak at, right at this, at this moment.
I know, it's hard. Informationally?
Yeah. I think the goal was, I can say that we, we're looking at it from the perspective of, as educators, what's our role in that, which is very different than, you know, and how does that impact, or the, how do we support? Good science, best available science and education of kids and that might matter. So there was gonna be some discussions that were gonna take place at, internally in the district, with science educators, and with others.
So, and while I believe that's an avenue that's, that's really worth pursuing, quite honestly, the board has a, a job and a purview that's a little higher level, and that's something that the superintendent and the curriculum director, that's, that's something for, for them to do. So I do feel that I've dropped the ball as the board president with what you're really asking in regards to this resolution. Could I move an agenda item up? Could I ask for a motion to move up future business?
Sure.
Could I have an agenda to move up item? Have a motion to move up item? I got some idea, let's see how it rolls. They're all scared now. Item thirteen, future business?
So move.
Is that okay? Can I do that, Sue? If nobody's...
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
See, I boss him into it sometime. Okay, we're gonna discuss future business really quick. So under future business, something that the superintendent and I discussed yesterday was to see how you all felt about moving forward for the next board meeting and to put this resolution item on the agenda.
I think it's a great idea. What date is Earth Day?
We're gonna miss it by two days. My apologies, that's my dropped ball.
That's okay.
She's like, just don't, as long as it gets done. Plated, Earth Day present. Do I have, I don't really need to vote on it, I just wanted to ask discussion.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what your direction is. You're just talking out loud right now. You're not, you're not doing a, a person by person.
Right.
Wouldn't it be to put the item on the agendas, the commitment to call?
Well, I think we just wanted to feel for how, how you felt about that, if there's any discussion about that. It's something that Gary and I, as we set the agenda, could move forward with.
I definitely think it's a great idea.
So if we have, if we have some interest in it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would tell the students that I will be responding to you in the near future with some ideas on how to maybe take a look at a resolution. Move that up so you didn't have to stay to the very, very end to hear that was what we already had planned for future, or I had planned to discuss for future business. While we're there, is there any future business? So I moved it up. This is now, this is now your only option.
I think that was it.
Well, I would say to the students, though, that the board, you probably have identified it, but we've tried really hard to be as environmentally compatible and carbon, you know, sensitive and just out ahead of it as best we could with the solar panels, the water fountain, a lot of different things, the way we've done our landscaping, and I have to be honest, it's one of the things that always factors into our budget decisions, but not always doing what's cheap, easiest, quickest, doing what's, you know, more sustainable, to be honest. And same with our food, and I think all of us are here with that old adage that our grandparents had, right? The original conservation, waste not, want not. So just don't use more than you need, right? And so we've actually, I'm kind of, I have to be honest, I'm really proud of our district for that. I think we're out ahead, we're not as progressive as some, but we're more progressive than most. And I think all the board members and our administration, teachers, our students have all been fairly enlightened and, and, and put it into action. It's one thing to yak about it, but to actually put it into action, and so it, it starts to get ahead of steam, right? So anyhow, I, I think this district has always been, at least since I've been on the board, pretty sensitive to all that, and, and really willing to do it. So where I want to leave you with agendas aside, if your students have ideas that you learn in class, or you read, or you come back from Washington DC enthused and say, you know what'd be a great idea for you guys to do?
Share it.
I want to hear about it, share it. Because it's hard for us to stay on top of everything, and you guys are cutting edge, you know? I know Ellen said something about old school, but there's some truth to that, but you guys are new school and, and enthusiastic school, and that counts for a lot. So I applaud you.
Yes. And I, I would add to that two things. One, we're very careful on this board to get into, we don't easily get into political debates. We do represent all of the students and the community, because this community wants to see children educated and hopefully go off in the world and conquer, and then come home and keep this a vibrant community, right? So we do, we have to be, even things like the student marches and walkouts and things, we have to be very careful because we have to, we have to understand that there are difference in opinions amongst people. And when you open the door for something, you have to be prepared to meet it by the opposing view if those folks come forward. So we're very careful not to spend your time and, and your tax dollars and jumping into political debates. However, I also believe that you guys are the next generation, and we need to make the world a better place for you. And I would say some folks have forgotten that, that that's part of our duty, not just to enjoy it while we're here, but to leave it better for you. And so while we may be a lot older than you, you more than me.
Frank would be.
And frankly, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know, I might be the baby of the group, which is, I don't know.
No. Cliff.
Oh, that's right, Cliff is way the baby of the group. Oh, my goodness. But jokes aside, sometimes even if maybe we disagree with something, which I'm not that anyone here agrees, disagrees with this issue, you're right, we are to represent you and do right by you and leave the world better for you. So we need to listen to your opinion. So thank you for keeping me honest and keeping me in the game on this issue, because I got a little behind it, and I know you've been asking, and you have politely not let up. So kudos to you, kudos for being such amazing, great speakers. I know there's been a lot of talk about those, those Parkland High students and how brave and how well, and, and I had somebody that was just, just, somebody telling me recently how they were just so happy to see students that age speaking so well, and I thought, well, yeah, come on down to the board meetings, you know, twice a month, and you can see it right here live. So thank you for continuing to be such an awesome example of that. So I will stay in touch. Thank you for keeping me honest. With that, we're gonna move on. Thank you. If you have to sneak out the back of your homework, we will not make you stay for the whole entire thing, but you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We are gonna move on to item nine, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. I need to slide my snacks off my, sorry, Sue, for my, my snack, ready? So, over the last couple of weeks, we have, as a board, we have attended a AED presentation to Petaluma Junior High. The American Graffiti folks have provided another, what does AED stand for?
Electric.
Electric.
Ah, there you go. So they, Petaluma Junior High already had one or two, but they realized their science wing was so far away from where their AED was, and so they reached out to American Graffiti, and they brought them another one, they funded another one, so it was very, very nice. Couple of us went to the Westside Band Festival, the GQ, is it, should we call it show?
Yeah.
Show at Petaluma High School. The Westside Choral Festival, how did I miss that?
It was great.
Oh, I'm really disappointed I missed that one. Summer, one of us had a meeting with PFT, Petaluma Community Relations Committee, and that is it. This is just a note to myself at the bottom, you can, you'll pass that to Sue? Anything else anyone wants to mention? I think you've got it all covered. Okay, item ten, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion, ten points. Whoa, that's, never mind.
So move.
Second.
Don't read that whole thing, I'm out of practice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, who's second here?
I do.
Ellen. All right, drum roll please. That takes us to item eleven, action item eleven point one, Administration Human Resources, eleven point one, point one, facility naming, Petaluma High School track complex and press box. And I believe we have someone in the audience that's gonna come speak to this, yes? Do you have anything to say first?
Yeah, Rod Moore. It is here.
All right, I need a second, and, I mean, a motion in a second.
I'm ready to motion.
Second.
All right, come on down, Mr. Moore.
Anybody discuss this?
We are, this guy.
I'm feeling set up.
All right, lady, just roll with it.
Was this kind of like, you want, want to prove that you're smarter than a fifth grader? Really impressive. Young kids earlier, high school kids, you stole my thunder. We thought all the smart kids were in Florida, right? They're obviously not.
I was talking about you and the conversation we had.
Well, I appreciate that, and that, and that's true, but I do have some comments, but we'll have those prior to that.
So part of, obviously, part of being in a great community are great people, and part of being a great person is sometimes people want to recognize you at some point, whether that is after you have left this world or during the time where you're here, still plugging away, doing great things. And there was, there was a groundswell of support during the development of the complex, Ellison Field, at Petaluma High School, track area, and everything that we've done out there to, people, some folks saw it as an opportunity, longtime community members, to do something right by some people that have done some really great work in the community. The board has a, a policy on how you might go about naming a facility or, or a building after an individual. We follow that policy. We had a naming committee that got together, and Mr. Moore is here to tell us about what came from that.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I am Rod Moore. Most of you know me, some of you don't. I'm a, one of a three-generation group of graduates from Petaluma High School. My dad graduated from there in forty-four, I did in seventy, and my son graduated in two thousand and one. As part of that, I've had the good fortune of getting to know some of the people around Petaluma High School, some of whom have been there for quite some time, and, and some other folks from the community that I believe deserve recognition. Lieutenant Callahan invited me to participate in the committee that he just referenced, J.J. Jackson, Ms. Bryant, Troy St. Anderson, to call him, and I sat and talked about the appropriateness of naming opportunities potentially for Coach Doug Johnson, or Ron Walters, who, while not a part of the educational system in Petaluma, was certainly the core part of, during my long lifetime, some of you, much younger than I, in fact, relative to Coach Johnson and Ron Walters, born after they started contributing to the community. And, and there's a third part that I don't think we touched on, but I think is appropriate to consider, and that's Dr. David Sisler, who's passed away recently, and many of you probably know that Dr. Sisler was the Friday Night Lights doctor for Petaluma High Football for my lifetime, quite frankly.
Fifty years?
I don't, longer than fifty years, because as a little boy in early sixties, I, I got you by about a week. In any event, we talked at some length about the contributions of Coach Johnson to the community, and I had the pleasure, this is kind of interesting, because it's the 50th anniversary of everything in nineteen sixty-eight, from the Tet Offensive to the horrors of assassinations to Richard Nixon's first election as President of the United States. Doug Johnson came to Petaluma in that fall, before Nixon was elected, and I was a PE student, a junior at Petaluma High at that time, and he came to teach my PE class, and, you know, PE is important still today, but it was pretty significant back in those days. You had to shower, and you had to put on your shorts, and you had to do all that stuff, and you did that at the crack of a whip. As a junior in high school, I knew everything, of course, right? As did my peers. As did my peers. And here's this little guy, because Coach Johnson's not very big, and he shows up and he's going to tell us that we have to do all those things? I don't think so. Well, it took about two weeks for us to figure out, we didn't mess with Doug. He's been a boxer in college, one of the toughest people you ever want to meet. And the proof of that is, 50 years later, in anticipation of this appearance here tonight, I walked to the Dursfield Complex, Ellison Field Complex, just to think about, you know, how Coach Johnson, Ron Walters might be honored, and who do I run into? There's Coach Johnson locking the gates, chasing the kids from the track team away. And we sat and we talked about his concerns for this beautiful new facility. And he mentioned to me that he comes there every day. And I know he's coaching, so, I mean, there's a reason for that, but I bet he's there on the weekends too.
He is. He's walked the bathrooms on Saturday morning.
We're talking 50 years. Ladies, I know neither of you are that old. I'm pretty sure since Mr. DeGraw was identified as the youngest member, he hasn't. And I'm guessing that there are a bunch of you that if you're 50, you're barely 50, so he was...
My son had him.
Okay, all right. In any event, so you said you were an old timer and I don't believe it.
I'm a few years older than 50.
In any event, I can't think of a more appropriate ongery of Doug Johnson for something related to the track component. We talked during our meeting, I hope I'm not limited to three minutes.
No, you don't get three minutes.
Okay, in any event, we talked during the course of our meeting about how to honor Coach Johnson and express some concern over the sensitivity of it already being named appropriately for Coach Ellison. And I hadn't noticed before, but on the football scoreboard, there's reference to that, Ellison Field. I hope somebody's talked to him, I can't imagine him having a church.
He has a church.
That's one of the things that we discussed. In any event, we discussed at some length the appropriateness of perhaps some signage, much like Coach Ellison's, but perhaps on the back of the baseball scoreboard, essentially naming the track component of the track facility. And I don't know the exact words or how you would want to do it, but I can't think of anything more appropriate. Another thing that I've been involved with in the community for quite some time is an effort to restore or create a baseball playing facility, because my real job in life is that I'm the general manager of American Legion Baseball Team and we've had success. And unfortunately, with all the history of baseball success in Pedaluma, we don't presently have other than overused high school fields, all due respect. We don't have a facility. And so I have, ironically, years ago met with a group that Doug Johnson was involved in to get some funding for the renovation of McNear Park, which has kind of gone by the way for a bunch of reasons, but there's now a, an effort to create a facility in the East Washington Sports Complex. And when Ron Walters died last year, I had a conversation with his daughter that was an extension of that earlier effort of McNear Park, to name a press box for Ron Walters. I don't know, again, how many of you have history with Ron Walters, but I think he predates Doug Johnson. Late 50s, early 60s, come to Pedaluma and is a disc jockey on a radio station that no longer exists, K2OK. When I was probably a teenager, he announced Little League games for the, then won Little League in Pedaluma. Was the announcer of Pedaluma High School football games, when they were carried on the radio on Friday nights. So to me, it's totally, one, he needs honor, then subsequently, you know, he was involved as representative spokesperson for the city of Pedaluma, had a community access television show that promoted Pedaluma sort of like Open Roads or whatever it is.
The area back road.
The area back roads, whatever it was. Ron did that for Pedaluma, super ambassador advocate for the community. Can't think of a better way to honor somebody than a naming opportunity for the press box in the new facility at Dursfield. And he's definitely deserving, given what he gave to this community, never leaving and probably never making a lot of money and living a lifetime of commitment to the community. And then the final thing I wanted to reference, I don't think we really talked about, but I've talked to some other folks about, again, is Doc Sisler. There needs to be something, and I don't know what it is, I haven't thought about it. You know, is it a plaque somewhere, is it a stone with a plaque somewhere? Like we have honoring Chuck Cadman out in front of the administration building? I don't know, but I think that that's something that you as a board probably should consider, because again, 60 years, I would guess. Friday night, every Friday night, I'd see him summit, kid going down, youth football player, his brain and ankle hurting, knee, maybe taking a little longer to get up, checking for concussions. He was out in the middle of that field when he was in his 30s. When he was in his 80s, he was doing that. So hopefully you can consider all those.
So, so a couple of things. I guess to start with, you know, one of the things that the committee, it was a unanimous recommendation for Ron Walters, Doug Johnson. Doc Sisler, the way the board policy works, there's a why I didn't bring that up at the time, because he had just passed the week before. Policy is we have to wait a year moratorium when you die. So when Ron Walters died, there was a number of people that had come to me with stories and they really wanted to bring this forward at that particular time. And I literally calendared it a year down the road and then I...
So who killed Doug Johnson?
Well, you don't have to necessarily, so that's the only bullet all that. I don't even know what to say to that.
I think he's tougher than you, so you better watch out.
I will put it on my calendar. And I think that there was a sense that, that there's nothing wrong about giving somebody, someone a big thank you for all that they've done. And the message it sends to future people, it's that you don't do these things to be, to get your name on a wall. But when you do great things, people, you get acknowledged. And so I just want to show you real quick, because we have, this is kind of a mock spec up for the, Ron Walters would be right underneath the press box. It would just be lettering under that, but as far as the, the, we kind of have an eyesore anyways, the back of the rest of the baseball field.
Right.
And so I believe we'll just kind of blow that up. That would be a metal sign that would show in the back of...
That'd be on the back of the baseball score.
Baseball scoreboard.
Yeah, because that's unfinished anyhow.
And so we, you know, and, and Coach Ellison thought it was a fantastic gesture. And we reached out to him before we set this meeting up. So we're asking for the board to...
Is Coach Johnson aware of this proposal?
As a South Dakota student, when I talked to him, he didn't mention.
We were kind of hoping to keep it quiet.
Yeah, right in front of the camera.
All of you out there.
Look at the camera.
And do an unveiling. So we may be able to have the sign ready, but we certainly can do mockup and we want to, we want to get out to people that, from both families, that, or connections, and do something right. And figures that we could tie it in with a kind of a late grand opening, reopening of the facility.
And your other...
Where's your mockup on the scorebox?
Uh, well, we have a mockup of the scorebox, yeah. It's, it's, there's lettering already there, it says PJHS above it. And so we would use, PHS, and then we would do the same, same, it's a certain style lettering.
And we just painted the press box.
Looks nice, I got a lot of comments from that. Yeah, a lot of people have commented on that.
Yeah. It's already a signage.
We're pretty excited, we're getting it, and then of course, you know, we have, we have, there's still a couple of pieces that are, that are amenities that are being added to the facility.
And we'll double check the spelling before we...
That's always the next one.
Ron has two N's.
You're a real stickler.
Yeah, I am a stickler.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well deserved. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Proud of your company.
Yes.
We take the opportunity to...
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
All right. Wait, you don't want to hear the rest of it? You don't want to hear the early warning, Ron?
He bills by the...
Yeah, he does bill by the hour.
Just record it.
Good night. 11.1.2, resolution, I'm so sorry, I'm fingerprinting myself. Resolution 1718-23 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Unit High School Districts, eliminating vacant classified positions effective June 30th, 2018. I have a motion?
Sub move.
I have a second. Phoebe gets it. Anyone? I know it's all expounded already.
I have a question. I, as I was reading through this stuff, I was a little concerned about the elimination of the bilingual positions. I know they haven't been filled, but they seem, it seems really important to me. I'm concerned about that.
So those, those are positions at, or that, it was actually two positions filled by one person at Mary Collins School in Cherry Valley. And they no longer have the English learner population to support the need for that particular position.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? That's why I asked questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.1.3, resolution 1718-24 of the Board of Education of Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Unit High School Districts, eliminating classified positions effective June 30th, 2018.
Sub move.
I have a second.
Second.
She got you again, goes down. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was 11.3, 11.1.3. 11.1.4, my eyes must be getting worse. Resolution 1718-25 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Unit High School Districts, eliminating school secretary position effective June 30th, 2018.
Sub move.
Here you go. Is that you, Frank?
Yes.
You missed it, you could have. Questions?
So is this, to a crossroads, not having any school secretary anymore, or just...
So there was a person actually who is at Carpe Diem, who spent one hour of her day doing some attendance work for Crossroads. Crossroads has a halftime secretary who is capable of doing that work. And so that person is still there. We simply eliminated the one hour attached to Crossroads of that person doing attendance work from the other side.
So Carpe Diem is...
Thank you.
Is it the non-millennial, like, early?
Correct, Sue, Sue says you are correct.
Yes.
So you don't have... All in favor?
Aye.
Michael?
It's in the air.
Oh, I didn't hear you speak up. Aye, that was five. 11.1.5, resolutions, depressing, resolution 1718-26 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Unit High School Districts, reducing the school account to a position effective June 30th, 2018. You have a motion?
Sub move.
Doug, second.
Second.
There you go. Any questions?
And is Cherry Valley, is enrollment low there? Is that why all these positions are...
So this is, well, as you know, Cherry Valley is overspending. And so that's part of, part of the reduction. But this also puts this school in line with every other school and the staffing that every other school has.
Oh, some are.
Yeah, so for whatever reason, they have more of that particular position than the other school site. So this simply aligns that school with the other schools.
So it's based on enrollment, the amount of hours you get in these positions, or...
So Pangrove Elementary, for example, has about the same, I think, five additional students. And they have 1.5 FTE in the office for clerical support. And Mary Collins at Cherry Valley had 1.75 for five year students.
Got it. So is it an actual position that's going, or just the hour?
It's a, it's a portion of one person's position.
So that person may still be there, but they're just not doing a certain kind of work.
Correct. I had a conversation, I had a conversation with that person and it was her intention to remain in that position.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.1.6, approval of addendum for Assistant Superintendent's Educational Services, Business Services, Student Services.
Sub move.
Doug, second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Is this just, a timing issue?
I should have done it in January. And you always extend a year, a year out, so. But we got so busy in January, February, March, that I moved it, getting it done now.
So it's just an extension of a year of the contract?
Yeah, yeah, you don't, you don't, you don't send somebody into their last year, in the last year without, you always have a year out on your contract.
Unless you have a different...
There's, that's, it's called being a lame duck if you don't do that.
All good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11.2, business services, 11.2.1, purchase orders, you have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Any questions or recusing or anything?
I'm recusing.
Mics out? Phoebe, you good? All right, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four with one recuse. 11.2.2, rati, oops.
Wait, let me back up.
Ratification of warrant register for warrants issued March 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2018 at Pedaluma City Schools.
Sub move.
Second.
I'm recusing.
Phoebe's out?
I'm recusing.
Mics out. Ellen, you okay, Ellen?
I'm good. I've got no business.
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three and two. 11.2.3, resolution 1718-27 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary School Districts, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, election of 2014 Series B, in the principal amount of not to exceed, that's nine ones zeros, and approving related documents and actions.
Second.
Take it away, Chris.
So as you recall, we sold bonds for the high school authorization just over a year ago now. And so this is now getting ready for selling another issuance, the second issuance under the bond series that we have, so $9 million. We have representatives from Stiefel here with us, our financial advisor.
And you did not tell them to...
No, actually, I got it at 7:30, I'm so sorry. Bruce Kearns and, and, yeah, I know, they, they... I always feel bad when I'm watching the folks I don't recognize thinking, why are they here? Why are they, can I move something up? Why are they sitting through the hall? I'm so sorry, thank you for staying. So they're part of our financial team, as you know, Greg Isom is another part of it. And so they're an important piece of pulling this information together. This resolution essentially authorizes the superintendent and myself to work with our financial team to then prepare and finalize the official statement, which in current form is our preliminary official statement, and also the contract for the sale or the agreement for the sale of the bond. So that's kind of our next step as we move forward. And we're anticipating in May, late May, I think...
Early May, sell and late May, closing and money to your account and accounting treasury.
That's a good market for right now, huh?
Yes, it is a good market.
We're also trying to take advantage of interest rates before they continue to climb. So interest rates are already going up and the lower the interest rate, obviously the lower the repayment for taxpayers. And so it's a benefit, it doesn't benefit us, but it does benefit our taxpayers to have the lowest interest rate possible when we do the sale and when we structure that. So that's why we didn't want to wait too much longer to get this going.
And do we have plans for this money? Once it's issued, do you have to spend it within...
Yes, we have to have a plan and place to spend it within three years of receiving the cash. And so we're anticipating projects like modernization for our elementary campuses. We have lots of different modernization style projects, whether it's the roofing or whether it be mechanically units and other types of...
We've got all of our Prop 39s, that we've finished up.
And we also may have a member like Oak also has $1.8 million commitment. So they also may be included in this. So, yeah, we will have a plan and place.
Just where are we on our issuance? Is our total authorized? If we do this nine, yeah, then where are we left? What do we have left?
There'll be five million left after this.
Because the first one was approximately $7 million. Plus the nine is 26.9, I think it's the bond.
Is there any reason why we just go nine instead of the whole 14? If it's a good market, is it the three year thing that we don't want to get hung up?
It's the three year thing in large part, but I don't know if you want to speak to that, the whole, isn't there a $10 million debt threshold or not? There used to be.
There's a $10 million threshold for having the bonds, particularly appealing to banks.
Okay.
Provision that banks can invest in bonds.
That's kind of the sweet spot.
Your sale of bonds in that calendar year is ten million or less.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
What kind of interest do we get from the county as far as us putting our money in theirs?
Very little. I mean, we, you know, we're obligated to invest in the county treasury, obviously. Interest earnings are inching up a bit, but you know, all county treasuries are very conservative in their investment policies. And so we're not receiving a significant amount. I think for the high school, we were, we were hoping to generate about two hundred thousand a year on twenty million dollars. You know, and back in oh five, oh six, oh seven, when we were structuring bonds, you know, we were getting four to six hundred thousand easily a year. And we're just not seeing that in interest earnings at this point.
Big.
Very, very low interest rates, yeah. But again, that benefits the repayment on.
Right.
Sure.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twelve, thank you for being here for so long. We will not, over time, we don't even see you again.
I look forward to seeing you the next time.
Thank you.
Item twelve, discussion information on the items. Twelve point one, Administration Human Resources. Twelve point one point one, Williams Settlement Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report for January first through March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. Anybody have anything?
Clause of review?
Yeah, pretty good.
Twelve point one point two, Williams Settlement Second Quarter Report returning seventeen to eighteen, visit and review of McKinley School. Amended Board bylaw, excuse me, first reading for amended Board bylaw nine two two zero, Board of Education Elections. Discussion? Amended Board bylaw, first reading amended Board bylaw nine one two one, President. Got nothing? All right. Twelve point two, Business Services. Twelve point two point one, new board policy, first reading for board policy three four seven zero, debt issuance and management.
So this is an important board policy that we have not historically had, that there's been some changes in the law. So we really needed to get this board policy passed, especially since we're gearing up for the issuance. And this will also help us as we go through the rating agency process, knowing that we have a good debt issuance and management policy in place, so.
That's right. Rating agencies have been asking for years about whether schools in California have debt management policies. The universal answer is no. And so the State Treasurer's Office about a year ago sponsored legislation which mandates that any public agency in California that wishes to sell bonds before those bonds are sold, has to adopt a debt issuance and management policy. The form that you have before you tonight is the form that's provided by the California School Boards Association and most school districts in California adopt this various form. Perfect.
So we'll be bringing that back at the next meeting, which will be, you know, prior to our.
And that'll be an action item next year. Well, what does it do? It basically just.
It just establishes policy and it just, it just talks about. Yeah, and there's been some minor adjustments based on our unique needs and type of debt that the board basically is just in offering in that respect. It's a good policy, it's pretty lengthy. I did go through it pretty closely. If you guys have any info to toss on, I'm happy to, you know, share that with me by now.
Well, it's kind of conforms to the industry standard, what they expect to see. We want to be within that framework, you know, to start asking for exceptions and drifts, which can cost, but. Well, we'll go for another point.
I'm going to skip future business.
You're right, you already did it.
I have a little report on this now. Got signed up papers, adjournment to close session, which we don't need to do, so we don't need, we can be action. Sorry, yes, sir.
Are you not going to be here for the second board meeting name?
I'm sorry, we already discussed future business. You missed the boat, you have to be here.
I'm just throwing that as an aside.
What's the date on that?
Second. He said the second one, not the first.
Oh, the second one. You knew where I was going with that, didn't you?
I knew where you were going.
All right, I forgot one. Okay. All right, so I am going to do our closed session. We had three student discipline matters, so I will report out on this. Case number twenty-three. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expel will act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year and the fall semester of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Case number twenty-four. A case has been presented to the board that student did commit an expel will act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motions for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year and the fall semester of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Submove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number twenty-five. A case has been presented to the board that student did commit an expel will act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year and the fall semester of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance prevention, counseling program, and screens, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Submove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's our last one. Ms. Rose, thank you for doing all the work that you do. I know we come out here and zip through this pretty fast, but of course, lots of discussion behind closed doors